Yep, I would.
Okay, I've seen that's already, and I see we have our board members online. I will call to order the March 21st meeting of the Ferguson Township Board of Supervisors. First item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. So if we could all rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Now we'll go to announcements with our manager.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, members of the board, staff, and the public for joining us this evening for the March 21st regular meeting of the Board of Supervisors. This meeting has been properly advertised in accordance with the Pennsylvania Sunshine Act as a hybrid meeting with the option to attend virtually or in person here in the main meeting room. If you are in attendance virtually using the Zoom platform and wish to speak on behalf of an agenda item, please say your name, municipality of residence, and the topic you wish to speak on when the chairwoman calls on you. If you are attending in person and joining us here in the main meeting room of Ferguson Township, please, and you wish to speak on behalf of an item on the agenda, please address the board at the podium and state your name, municipality of residence, and the topic you wish to speak on. Prior to commencing this meeting, I have just a few short procedural items. First, members attending the use, excuse me, the Zoom platform, you are asked to remain muted unless you have something to speak on and the chairwoman calls on you to prevent any ambient noise and disrupting the meeting. If a member of the public is acknowledged by the chair, they may unmute their microphone for their question or comment. Secondly, board members are asked to indicate their name when motioning or seconding a motion so that the minutes may accurately reflect the action taken. And finally, a rule called the Board of Supervisors will now be taken to ensure that all members can hear and interact using the Zoom meeting platform. Please indicate that you are here when your name is called. Ms. Strickland?
Here.
Ms. Stevens?
Here.
Mr. Thompson?
Here.
Mr. Gracie Griffin? Mr. Gracie Griffin?
Mrs. Corey, I can't hear you guys if you're talking. There's no, there's no sound on my end.
Oh, good. I'm glad you said something. Me too. I was just trying to figure out if it was just me. Can you guys hear us? Can somebody wave their hand like sentries? I can see you right now.
Yeah, we can.
Yes. Okay, great. Oh, I just heard you.
Can you hear us now?
Yes.
Is that better? Okay.
Okay, Mr. Gracie Griffin, can you hear us?
I can also hear you.
Great. Thank you. Ms. Nenney?
Here.
Thank you. Madam Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Okay, I'd also like to announce we had an executive session on March 10th regarding personnel. And finally, under announcements, there was a request made to move item nine of new business. That's the board member request, request for parking study on Dabler Road earlier in the agenda due to the large number of pub, members of the public here to comment on that item, and it's at the, it's currently at the end. So I wanted to see if there's agreement to move that up on the agenda. I would suggest at the top of new business under, just after the consent agenda. So I'd like the opinions of the board members on that.
I'm good with that.
Thank you.
Yeah, I would move with that.
Thank you. And online. Corey and Laura, is that fine?
Are you asking if we're okay online with the movement, board members?
This would be the, the movement of item number nine from, number nine under new business to the top of new business. I guess that would make it number two after the consent agenda. One after, yes, the consent agenda is none, yes.
Sounds good.
That is fine with me as well.
Okay. Okay. Do we need a motion for that? Okay, does someone want to make that motion for?
Madam Chair, I move that we move item 11-9 to after 11-1 on the agenda packet.
This is Patty. I'll second.
Okay, any other discussion? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, say no. Thank you. And actually, the final item under announcements is if we could ask the manager to please give us some time checks as we move throughout our agenda, because I know we have a very full list of items tonight, and that will help us keep us, keep us on track. So thank you for that.
Madam Chair, can you clarify? Would you like me to acknowledge a five-minute check when there's five minutes remaining on an item?
That would be very helpful if you could do that. Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
At that point, we can determine if we need to expand discussion or not, but that would be very helpful for us. Okay, up next is public input. If there are any members of the public who have any comments on items not currently on tonight's agenda, and I am seeing one, if you could please come up to the podium and state your name, your township of residence, and please keep your comments to about five minutes. You'll see the, you'll see the podium up there with the microphone. Yes, thank you.
It's more of a request. I spoke with, my name's Stefan Ewing. I grew up in State College, Pennsylvania, went to Penn State, graduated about 12 years ago, and I have more of a request for the township. I spoke with Larry, the arborist. Is this working okay? And then I spoke with James Progar today, the Assistant Township Manager, and I would like to request permission to move forward, and I don't know what the next step is exactly. He told me to come to this meeting and at this time, ask this or state this, on developing or creating a small, one-acre food forest project at Tom Tudak Park. I know you guys are one of the three prongs that would be approving that. It would serve multiple functions. It would be both recreational and educational. I would like to collaborate with Penn State, with mycologists and different ecologists. It would demonstrate, one, how landscaping can be a beautiful ecological situation, and how people can do that in their yard. They can have fruit trees, nut trees, and incorporate all layers of ecology, all seven layers of a forest in their yard, completely organic, no synthetic additives which deplete the soil biome and the waterways indirectly. Two, it would demonstrate how the indigenous used to live with the land, and we would go into that with a plaque that would explain how they had tree crops in all of their food systems, and how they lived in symbiosis with the land as opposed to treating their food systems as separate from ecology, which it is not. It never is, it never should be. Lastly, it would be a demonstration of what's, what's new and happening in America, which is a regenerative movement, or regenerative agriculture movement, which is very robust in Lancaster, and it's growing in this area, and it incorporates things like cover crops, which we would have cover crops throughout the whole thing, clover, et cetera. It also incorporates tree crops, which is, has been proven to be one of the number-one things in storing carbon in the soil as well as storing moisture, which also stores carbon. So it would do a lot of different functions, and it would be a beautiful place for the public to go hang out. It was partly inspired by that mulberry tree that's there that has these like delicious, beautiful mulberries once a year, and I was like, man, we need more fruit trees here. So I drew up a plan. I have, if anyone wants to see it, with, it would probably have somewhere between 24 different species of fruit and nut trees, and I would, it'll be funded by the PA Native Plant Society as well as me doing community outreach and fundraising for it. I would be the primary person planning and implementing it, creating it. It would also, lastly, it's a lot of things in one, so I'd have plaques that would, that would explain this, and I would love to get Penn State involved, but also explain, there's a new type of fertilizer that's actually cheaper for farmers. It's one-ninth the cost, completely organic, so organic you can drink it. It came out of Korea. They started doing it in Hawaii, and now they're scaling it. And it would be demonstrating that as well, as how you can make a very robust agricultural system with organic fertilizers that are so healthy you can drink them. So it'd be doing all of these things in one with plaques demonstrating them, and I'd love to get Penn State involved. They would have a restoration force in the corner that would be like a battery pack feeding carbon to the, or nitrogen to the other fruit plants through the mycelium. That is my request. I'm not exactly sure how to move forward, but this is what I'd like to spend my summer doing, so.
Well, thank you so much. What an interesting idea. That's really exciting. So thank you for coming tonight and sharing that. What I'll ask is that you share your contact information with the township manager, and we can follow up with you on that. Tudak Park is actually in a trust, so it'd be a little, it'd be a little bit more involved, but I think we'd welcome that conversation. So if you could reach out, I know all of our contact information is on the website.
Who's the?
I can't hear again. I'm sorry. The sound stopped again. Lisa, shortly after you started talking, your sound cut out again. Are you able to say your, what you're saying again, and then I have a question for our speaker, just a brief one. Thank you. We can't hear you yet, though.
Were you able to hear the speaker?
Oh, I can hear you now.
Okay.
Yes, I heard you start speaking, and then almost right when I raised my hand, actually, about that time you cut out again. Sorry to interrupt.
Okay, thank you. Well, I know we're looking at that, so just thank you for letting us know. If you can just continue to let us know if there's other audio problems, and you had a quick question?
I do, and thank you. I will continue to do so. Thank you so much for presenting your interesting project, and I think you'll find a lot of alignment in some of the documents that you find online with our township and, and some of the endeavors, initiatives that we've been working on. And I guess I just wanted to ask if you had yet made contact with the master gardeners that run Snetsiger Butterfly Garden at Tudak Park?
No, I have not.
Okay, so I would love to connect you with those folks. If you want to contact me, I'd be happy to do that, and they can give you a lot of boots-on-the-ground information, and I know they've worked with folks before that, in particular with trees. We have a lot of invasives there, et cetera, et cetera. So they're enthusiastic and do really good work, and I'd love to connect you, and thank you for your, your effort here.
Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Okay, were there any other public comments for items not on the agenda this evening? I'm seeing none, so we'll move to approval of the minutes for March 7.
This is Patty, motion to approve the March 7 meeting minutes.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, were there any changes, comments? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Any opposed, say no? Thank you. Okay, up next, we have our recognition of service to the Center Area Transportation Authority Representative, John Spahalsky. Mr. Spahalsky is joining us this evening, so if you'd like, we invite you to come up. You can stay seated as we read our comments in the proclamation that is entirely up to you, and we'll also invite you up to share some comments as well. So I think we could start with, I know we had some emailed comments in, and we could start by sharing those.
Do you want me to use the microphone?
If you could, please.
I assume it's still on. How does the sound level look and sound?
It's good for us. I'm going to check online, and it looks like they can hear us online as well.
Okay. Thank, thank you. Well, thank you very much for this recognition. I would like to say how much I appreciate the support that successive generations of elected Board of Supervisors members and the staff of the township centuries, you're the newest of the generations. When I first joined the board 43 years ago, this, the Board of CADA, 43 years ago this month, your seat was occupied by Donald Bachman. He was the township manager at the time. I won't go through the enumeration of everyone in between, but what I do want to say here very sincerely is that I very much have appreciated over each of the generations of all of you who have served, the support that you've given to both me as a, your representative on the CADA board, and also to the support of CADA's mission to provide public transport service to the area that we live in here, and to recognize that it is an area-wide system. Ferguson Township is an important member of it, and together, all of the members, or all of the municipalities served, of course, are part of a larger service network that has to be operated as a system. So I thank the township again very much for recognizing that fact also as part of CADA's mission. And with that, I don't want to take up any more time than is necessary here this evening, except to express my appreciation again.
Thank you so much. I know we had some comments that were shared that we're going to read at this time.
This is Kevin Abbey, and he goes, "We both consider it our greatest, one of our greatest professional joys to have worked closely with John Spahalsky. John's greatest attributes is a colleague of entry, communicated correctly and with thoughtful care, as he though never entered into the shared work that should have, which hadn't he done. John valued the professional give-and-take of his business relationships while never losing sight of the value of sharing and respecting the personal commitment which everyone at the table brought to group decision making. He always had a rye sense of humor and a twinkle in his eye which encouraged everyone to express themselves, and never tried to intimidate or discourage new ideas and thoughtful exchange. He always exhibited the highest ethical standards in his work and expected as much from others. John was never too busy to listen or take the time to return a phone call or offer a listening ear. John's greatest qualification was a transit board member, being totally committed to CADA. In our 30 years as general manager, we recalled, we couldn't recall John ever missing a board meeting, not even one time, and he always came to meetings fully prepared, knowing everything about public transportation locally as well as nationally and internationally. When it comes to transit history and public policy, there isn't a person on the planet who would believe in John. Pride in his obsolescence, John was most comfortable with the old ways. For example, he was happy to personally sign each CADA check decades after every other agency at Onibus. What he underspoke was that the interaction with CADA staff as the checks were being processed was priceless for everyone involved. Openness to trying new things, in spite of his natural tilt towards the past, John embraced the future, natural gas buses, onboard bus technology, new service models, et cetera. Willingness to partner with other entities. For instance, John supported taking on Penn State's campus bus service, working with the Center Region Council of Governments jointly higher at the transit planner. The ability to change course. John wasn't totally stepping his ways. For instance, following two decades of CADA not having a retirement program, John saw the way to support the adoption of the very third line. Being an effective representative of Ferguson Township, in spite of the different political issues of various Board of Supervisors over the years, John managed to work successfully with all of them, knowing the difference between policy setting and management. John was scrupulous about keeping out of the day-to-day management of CADA and ensuring that other board members stayed out of the way too. Supporting management, John regularly allowed the staff to propose initiatives, most of which he supported. Specific accomplishments: Cato Park Facility, John oversaw the relocation from Osmond Street to Cato Park in 1991, a transition made especially challenging by major design and construction issues. Cato Park Expansions, John supported two separate expansions of the original Cato Park facility to keep up with the size of CADA's fleet and the growth in the workforce. Cato Park Replacement, John was there for the replacement of the initial, of the initial Cato Park facility with a whole new one, with ample room for growth, another project that had more than its share of challenges. Natural Gas Bus Program, John supported the work done by Kevin, the lineup, federal and state funding and support from Columbia DAS could allow CADA to have the first 100% CNG bus fleet on the East Coast. Global Library Transit Center, John was agreeable to working creatively with Representative Peterson and other partners to secure funding for the library by incorporating CADA's downtown office into the ground floor. Site Plan Review Process, with the support of local elected and appointed officials during John's tenure, CADA developed the most effective transit support, transit support development review process anywhere in the nation. New Service Models, John was supportive of the creation of a CADA commute program in which CADA became the first transit system in PA to run Vantos, and more recently, the very successful CADA Go service.
Thank you so much. We appreciate those folks sending in their comments. We've put together a certificate of appreciation, which I'll be presenting to you as soon as we're concluded, and we'll stop and take a photo, but at this time, I'll read the certificate of appreciation, which states, "Whereas Dr. John Spahalsky has been the Center Area Transportation Authority Representative for Ferguson Township and has served the community for nearly 43 years, and whereas under John's leadership as a board member and then chairman, a few of the authority's major accomplishments have included: the integration of CADA Ride Peri Transit, CADA Commute, Carpool-Van Pull, and CADA Go on-demand microtransit programs into CADA's family of services; the conversion of CADA's fixed route fleet to clean-burning compressed natural gas CNG, which also resulted in CADA being one of the first transit systems on the East Coast to have an active fleet powered entirely by CNG; the implementation of a GPS-based technology program which allowed for the integration of real-time bus arrival information, iPhone and Android apps, audible and visual stop enunciators, and automated passenger counters; whereas John is a resident of Center County residing in State College, Pennsylvania, who has exemplified the finest in citizenship. Now therefore, the Board of Supervisors of the Township of Ferguson does hereby recognize and congratulate Dr. John Spahalsky for his dedication and his contribution to the community, commended this 21st day of March 2023."
Thank you very much for those very kind words. I appreciate it, both the citation you just read, and of course, also the submission by Kevin Abbey, a former general manager of CADA. I can't say enough in appreciation for the opportunity you've offered me to try to be of service to the public with the position I filled for you for so many years. But like all things that are good and interesting, they have to come to an end, and so that's what it is. But I have no regrets. I have only fond memories. Thank you.
Wow, that's wonderful. Well, we can't thank you enough, and I think all of the comments that have included everything that has been put into place during your tenure will just continue to speak for all of the contributions you've made to this community and beyond. So we thank you. I'm going to open it up to additional comments. And I'll look online. And we're going to take a very quick recess to take a photo, so I'll just call for a five-minute recess at this time. All right, if we are all back, I'll call us back to order. And up next, we have the University Area Joint Authority Report with Mr. Kunkel and Mr. Glebe.
Good evening, board members. I too would like to send my congratulations to Dr. Spahalsky. He has served township for over four decades. He has served township for over four decades and did a terrific job. He's so humble that he forgot to tell you that when he first started, that they started with eight buses that had been owned by three other authorities before they got them. So what you see today in this CADA authority is truly a great advancement from where we started. On behalf of Wes Glebe, my fellow board member on UAJA board, want to provide this report. This is current as of our last meeting on March 15th. We've been working very diligently on the Scott Road Pump Station replacement. That's had a number of problems over the years. The pump station has been replaced. The only thing that's not in place is the generator that will be, will provide a significant more generation of power for the facility, but it is fully operational. And we expect to have that switch and the generator in place as soon as we get through the distribution problems. Ozone Disinfection Project, this will replace our ultraviolet disinfection project that we have currently in operation at the authority. The ozone will reduce the energy usage and will also provide enhanced disinfection and destruction of pharmaceuticals and endocrine disruptors. We should expect to have this project operational by July of this year. Project that both Wes and I are very interested in is this third project, the anaerobic digester and sludge dryer project. This will replace our current composting program, which folks have been, gotten used to being able to pick up compost at the facility. That will no longer be in operation once this anaerobic digester and sludge dryer project becomes operational. This project is really interesting because it's going to be using both organic material from the Center Region or Center County Recycling and Refuge Facility. They'll be providing organic material in addition to the sludge that UAJA currently produces. And both Tyrone and Belfont Sewage Treatment Facilities will be bringing their organic material to the UAJA for incorporation into this project. The real outcome of this is that there will be a biogas that will be produced, which will be a marketable product that will be able to sell on the market. And so it'll have a value to it in excess of what the compost has right now. In addition to that, we're working very closely on a $20 million grant from the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania that will significantly offset the capital cost of this program for the ratepayers. We do have this project up on our website and it's at uaj.com/biosolids-project. And I would urge you all to take a look at that to learn more about it. We've had a ongoing rate dispute with State College Borough, which has been made public. Currently, the Borough is withholding over a million dollars in their, any amount of money they owe to the authority. This has contributed to having a debt ratio that does not comply with our bond issues. And so we've had to both consider that and we've had to raise rates. This will come out in the second quarter of this year. Our rates will be going from $104 per quarter to $108 per quarter. And until that dispute can be resolved, that rate will stay in place. Finally, we have a rates study subcommittee that has started. We're starting to look at the rate resolutions that were put in place and the rate methodology that was put in place when the authority was first formed, which is on an equivalent dwelling unit basis. The table that we use for that is almost 50 years old. So we're starting to look at whether or not that needs to be updated, bring a consultant on board, and also considering a different methodology maybe for a commercial industrial ratepayers that would combine both an EDU base rate and a volumetric basis. So with that, I think I've included also some of the cost savings and what some of these capital projects are actually going to result in, in actual dollars for the ratepayers.
Thanks very much. Thank you. Questions on the UAJA report? None in the room? Okay, I see Laura's hands up.
Thanks so much. Thank you, Mark, for your report. If I recall correctly, and I may not exactly, but I think when the Yards Development was finally arranging for their sewer easement, which happened years after their plan approval, but when they were finally arranging for that, I seem to recall that part of the reason why they were barred from hooking on to the Borough system was because of this difference in rates, like whereupon, you know, their systems are separate, they run their own system, there's different billing that's for the Borough, those kinds of things. My recollection is all of those kinds of things related to why we had to run the sewer the other direction, clear the other direction, that would be west. One, is that correct? And two, has that been resolved independent of the change, potential change in rates? Or is that problem still out there if it is properly recollected by me? Thank you.
Thank you. The agreement that the State College Borough had with the University Area Joint Authority expired about two years ago, that we've been operating under up until mid-last year under that agreement. But we decided that beginning of last year that we needed to really move to a reasonable and uniform rate, which was the equivalent dwelling unit. The Borough had been operating under a volumetric and still are. They bill their customers based on volumetric billing tied into the State College Borough water billing system. The other component of that, Ms. Donini, is that my understanding at the time was is that the Borough's conveyance system was not sufficient in that area to accept the sewage flow from the Yards at the manhole located on Whitehall Road. And therefore, they were not able to convey the volume of sewer that was being generated from both that and the Whitehall Road Regional Park into their system. And that's why they ended up with a pressure system that they've implemented.
Thank you so much. Is that follow-up question, you mean that that pump station actually, it wouldn't have been necessary had the Borough system been able to handle it and go the other direction? And then I guess my follow-up question is, that conveyance system, is there ever a plan for that to be UAJA? I mean, I don't know that we're planning any development out that way and if it matters, but like, is that seen as like a permanent barrier? And then I promise I'm done with my questions and thank you.
I think the pump station would have still been needed because it is at the low point of the property. They would have just pumped up to a manhole on Whitehall Road that would have had gravity feed into the Borough system and would have eliminated the pressure conveyance system that they had to construct along Whitehall Road up to Stonebridge. That would have been eliminated if they were able to get into the Borough system that had gravity feed at that, at that point of entry. I don't know what the limitations are as far as connections to that pressurized system along Whitehall Road. And that's something I can get back to you on, though.
Thanks very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay, I don't see any other questions. So thank you for your report.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, we have under Special Reports, Diversity, Equity, and Inclusionary Initiatives and Acknowledgements, we have Women's History Month, Greek American Heritage Month, Irish American Heritage Month, Agriculture Month, and Ramadan beginning on March 22nd. We'll move on to COG and Regional Committee Reports. Up first is the Climate Action and Sustainability Committee Report. Mr. Thompson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So we met on March 13th. We had a brief presentation on the CAAP Implementation Plan. We did discuss the refuse and recycling complaints and missed pickups that were discussed earlier in the year, mostly the result of two winter-related events that occurred two consecutive weekdays of pickups back-to-back, not a widespread issue. It was determined waste management's in the process of reviewing routes where refuse is collected on private alleys behind homes. The alleys have been problematic for refuse collection in the winter and in cases where maintenance is poor, you had overhanging limbs, potholes, or even ownership of the lane not being clear. COG is assisting and alerting residents to place a refuse at the curb of public streets moving forward. Recently, we also looked at recent refuse and recycling contracts from around the region and other parts of the state. Also took time, we got an update on refuse and recyc, the refuse and recycling program is distributor request for quotes on consulting services for the upcoming solid waste contract. So, and then just matter recorded, COG is partnering with the CBICC to host free energy educational sessions for businesses, local governments, and nonprofits in April, May, and June.
Thank you. I think one of them will be hosted at our building, right?
Yep.
Great. Okay. Questions on the Climate Committee Report? I'll look here in the room first. Patty doesn't have any. Go to Laura.
Thank you so much. I'm just actually following up on an issue that I think was reported last meeting, that it had been resolved or in the process of being resolved. But I actually drove through the property in question that has the repeating issue. And if that is what we consider resolved, then I guess I have some serious concerns. The trash, there were some places where there were six, eight bags of trash, trash blowing everywhere in the road, between residences, stuck in the fence at the stormwater facility at the lower end of the property. It did not appear to be resolved. And so I would like some follow-up on that. And so part of that follow-up could possibly be, instead of us, you know, just receiving the report on the problem, us getting some initiative and identifying the ordinance changes that are necessary to increase enforcement? Because basically, this is systemic allowance of littering. And it's, we, we did this in conjunction with the developer and the current management and the residents, we're doing this. So we're one of those. We have the power to change it. The message was not received. I know we had a reporter do a piece, maybe they want to do a follow-up piece. I have some photographs. If they'd like them, I'd be happy to send them. Thank you. But, you know, this is really a regional issue because of the ordinance that we need to all be aligning around supposedly, and so we're never going to do it because it's a big task. So if that's what's holding us back, then I say it's time that we need to take it upon ourselves to do it because we have, we are leading in the problem. So, thank you.
Thank you, Lauren. I am just as concerned about that property when the COG Executive Director and Recycling Administrator, Refuse and Recycling Administrator had mentioned it to me. My understanding was COG was addressing it and would continue to follow up. And I can definitely touch base with the manager on additional follow-up to bring back to the board later.
Thank you. Okay. Moving on to Facilities Committee. Patty?
My report is in the agenda, and if anyone has any questions, I'm happy to answer them if I can.
Thank you. Thank you for your report. Laura?
Sorry, I wasn't fast enough on the hand raise reaction. Thank you for noticing my hand, my actual hand. My question is just to confirm that when I hear some individuals say that the Millbrook, in a very diffuse manner in a nonofficial report capacity, the Millbrook Marsh thing is moving forward, what, does that mean that somebody has arranged for the $11 million of funding necessary to move that forward? Because, you know, I think we should be reflecting to our park authority representative that this is of the utmost concern. So I just wondered if you have any reflection on grounding any knowledge there? And, you know, how many, how many mills they're expecting us to increase our property tax to, to pay for that project if indeed it is moving forward? As I heard from a Planning Commission member, I believe it was.
If you're referring to the boardwalk, we didn't discuss the boardwalk at all.
Huh, okay. All right. Wanted to keep serious tabs on that because the, when the Planning Commission person mentioned it, they're also the park authority representative. So my ears perked up when I heard that. Thank you.
Okay, other questions on facilities? Thanks for attending that. I know there was an interesting discussion about reinvestment and looking at a percentage for that. So I think that's a good conversation. If anyone goes back and watches that meeting, I think it's worth it. You know, you can kind of get the gist without watching the entire long meeting, but to just get an idea of where the Facilities Committee is coming from, because they're going to be forwarding that onto the Finance Committee and then onto General Forum to look at that recommendation. So I think it's worth a listen if you have time. So if there's no other questions on that, Laura?
I'm really sorry. Thank you for going for me and also preemptively, thank you Lisa for going for me to finance. And also on that topic, thank you for identifying that. I guess my question about the reinvestment strategy relates to what's under the strategy because, you know, a randomized reinvestment strategy in a shotgun kind of way isn't going to be helpful. So like, are we going to be doing, are we going to be doing like a sinking fund kind of thing and planning on long-term capital investments? Or are we, is the expectation that every year in the budget, we should see that as a capital expenditure, direct expenditure planned for the next year? And I think that from what I see of the kind of capital that we've got in the COG, that we really should be looking at some sort of the sinking fund type model. Forgive me if I'm using the wrong word, but I think that at least as board members, you're probably understanding what I mean, where we cash the money for a specific thing, whereupon normally we don't do that because we try not to, you know, gather up taxpayer money, but in some cases where we have large capital investment, we need to. So anyway, just putting that out there on the table, following up on what you're saying there, Lisa, and thank you again.
Thank you. And I'll, I'll talk a little bit about that too in the Finance Report. So I see that Public Safety was canceled, so we'll move on to that Finance Committee Report. So we'll start with, let's see, it was primarily what we had discussed here at our work session, and that would be the budget timeline, guideline, and prioritization. We went through a pretty exhaustive conversation about those items, just beginning with, let's see, beginning with the timeline. I noted all of the points that we had made here and mostly just trying to coordinate that COG budgeting and CIP schedule with municipal budgeting schedules. And that was heard and I think also expressed by other municipalities. So, and in fact, So, and in fact, one or two others had requested that the COG budget cycle be moved up a quarter to accommodate those things. So that was discussed too, as was just changing the entire fiscal year of the COG budget. So very long discussion about all of that. Moving the budget up a quarter presents some problems, obviously, for just different estimations of, you know, what, you know, inflation will be, just different things like that, and also the timing of the different agencies. But with the timeline that was presented that we all reviewed, it does have a more aggressive schedule of getting things done earlier. And that one that we has includes our Ferguson dates because we had actually sent them to COG to share. So hopefully other municipalities will do that too. The way Joe Vigilone described that timeline is as a living document, so it'll be really tested and evaluated this year as, as things move along. So the other part of that timeline that we had talked about emphasizing was the time to receive back municipal comments on both the CIP and on the budget to have Finance evaluate and make any changes that were recommended there that should be implemented. So that will be noted as that cycle moves through. So that if, as that timeline is actually put into place, some of those dates are going to change in there, and it'll be more concrete when those things will be reviewed back to Along that discussion too, I guess I'll wait for that for executives. So we were just talking about trying to minimize some of the idling time of that document, and we had talked about that here.
Madam Chair, I just want to know if the timer went off, and so you have about four minutes remaining.
Okay, thanks. That's all I need. The guideline was what we had looked at here. So that guideline really presents the framework for a formula for the fixed or status quo expenses, so without expansion or additions. And so that will be used as that formula. So that was endorsed by Finance. And Joe Vigilone made also the good point that all those discussions are going to inform any fund balance policy that moves forward after this. So that was all productive. Let's see. Finally, the priorities. There was a lot of, there were a lot of different responses to the priorities when they were received back to Finance. So I think, I think there was just some different understanding of what was asked from Finance to executive and what executive was asking for. In the end, everyone agreed that those top few priorities that came out of the budget discussions last year should still be the top three priorities. So that lasted and that was endorsed and that moved on to executive. So I can get into that in just a second. I'm going to leave that there. The facilities item will come back to Finance next month, so just as information. Questions on Finance, and I'll speak to this a little bit in executive too, if you'd rather wait for that. I'm not seeing any, so we do not have an Authority Committee report, so I'll move on to executive, which I attended today, and...
I'm sorry. The, the, I'm sorry. There I am raising my hand. I apologize for interrupting, but I wanted to mention about the Center Region Park and Recreation Authority Committee entry here on our agenda, that you said we don't have a report. I'm sorry, I'm not, I'm not up to par, so I'm, I'm clearing my throat a lot. I'm, I'm sick right now. Sorry. But could I just mention, I think maybe when I had been chair last year, I think I had perhaps requested at that time that we begin to include, or maybe you did as vice chair, I'm not recalling exactly, but that we begin to include the Center Region Park and Recreation Authority agendas in our meeting packets because of the fact that they deal with about, you know, well, last year it was 87% of the COG capital investment, which was about $6 million, like, so that they deal with such a large amount of money. I think we asked that that be regularly provided. I wanted to ask if we could though bump it up to, you see the place, the Authorities' Boards and Commission reports. I know this seems kind of like a fussy kind of a detail, but those authorities typically have such larger kinds of budgets that they're working with, and that, that park authority, when then our rep comes and does do his report, it does appear under there. So I wonder if when we are attaching that agenda as an FYI, could we possibly pop that up underneath Authorities', Boards, and Commissions, Section VI, just for consistency sakes when we're going back to search for those agendas? And that's all, and again, I'm sorry to interrupt, but that would be super helpful. Thank you so much.
Yeah, that's actually just a mistake that that's listed there. So the agenda is included this time, but when that presentation is made, that's included under A.C. So that was that. Okay. Up next was the Executive Committee. We just met today, so no report included in the agenda. I wanted to note on the consent items that will be included in the General Forum packet, that the two parks items to be voted on in the consent agenda are going to be separated out so that park participant municipalities will vote on that and separately from the other item that's in there that all municipalities vote on. So just a note on that. Also, for your information, there will be a presentation on the Maxwell Development of Regional Impact. This is the DRI process, and there's going to be a very brief presentation on the DRI process for all of our education because it's been about 13 years since we went through this today. So it's a very, very good presentation. We had it today. And that will be in there. And then again, we looked at budget timeline, guideline, and prioritization. The guideline and timeline were both endorsed. And I think nothing else really to add on that. As you can see in the agenda that was attached were those budget priorities. The only change to those was the top three remain the same, support for safety, take care of what we own, and take care of COG staff. Number four was discussed, that's for future planning, so that will remain. And then the number five item will get moved to the section below, which actually applies more to COG's mission statement and purpose. And then we had a discussion on referring items from committees to the Executive Committee and General Forum. This was something we had talked about here, and like I mentioned in the previous report, just trying to reduce that time that's wasted in between a committee referring something. So like in this case, it would be Finance Committee referring, say, the CIP, that'll be the next thing coming up, to the Executive Committee, which will refer it to the General Forum, to refer that back to municipalities for comments. The discussion was about having that draft CIP referred from the Finance Committee to the Executive Committee and allowing the Executive Committee to directly refer that back to the municipalities through the managers to receive comment and submit that back in a letter as we did this time. So that way, during that budget and CIP timeline, you're not waiting for General Forum to receive that referral request, refer it back, receive it back, and it just allows, you know, probably add two to three weeks over, over time there in getting those comments in. I wanted to see if there are concerns about that, about the Executive Committee sending particularly those two items, the CIP and the budget, from, that are referred by the Finance Committee to Executive, instead of referring that to the General Forum to send out to municipalities if it's sent directly from Executive to municipalities. Our charge was to make sure there are no concerns with that.
No, I actually like that.
It seems very efficient, so. Go ahead, Laura.
I think I like it too. You don't know what you don't, don't know until you try it, but it seems good and streamlined in a way that we want streamlining to happen there. So, thanks.
Yeah, exactly. And this, the CIP will be a kind of a test to see how that works. Then I just did want to note that the meet and greet that's to take place before the General Forum starts at 6:00 PM. It wasn't in this report, so just to note that. Finally, to say that the April meeting for the General Forum will be different because there will be construction going on in the main meeting room. There were three options discussed. So something will be different. We will either be meeting at a different location, we'll be meeting almost entirely virtually with just a few people in the code conference room. So that is yet to be decided. So any questions on Executive Committee? Laura?
Thanks. Did I read the agenda right that we're, we are having the Millbrook Marsh Boardwalk feasibility study phase two presentation at General Forum?
We will have that presentation, yes.
Thank you. And did you, I hear correctly that you said, you know, the General Forum room will be under construction? We used to have...
For April.
...General Forum rotating at the municipalities. Have we talked about somebody hosting it?
Yeah.
Not that I want to volunteer us, but...
That, we did talk about that. We have our Planning Commission meeting here that night. So patent township had offered.
Okay.
So, yeah, that was talked about. So I think that'll be discussed at the next Executive Committee, so if there are strong feelings either way. The only thing I expressed is I think there needs to still be that hybrid component. We can't cut that out because it's expected now. So that was my only, my only comment on that. So I figured we're all flexible enough that we could make it work, so. Very good. Okay. So up next is staff reports, and I'll look to the manager if you had anything you wanted to comment on.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I will be providing items to note in my April 4th manager's report. I'll highlight that I attended the Pell-Rass Conference last Wednesday till last Friday, and that we had an annual employee meeting this afternoon. And outside of those two items, I will refer to the April 4th manager's report. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions for the manager? Seeing none. Public Works Director report, anything you'd like to highlight?
I have nothing to add to my written report. I can answer any questions.
Questions? Laura?
I don't have a question. I just wanted to again say thank you, if I didn't say it last meeting. Thank you so much to Public Works for installing those, I'm not sure what they're called, flag arms on the streetlights in Pine Grove Mills. A resident actually contacted me, showing, showing me Public Works out there, working on it and putting that up, and they're really excited about showing some village pride hanging from them, and just many thanks. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Planning Director report is included. Don't see her online. And Chief of Police report, report is included. Anything to add?
Nothing to add. I wanted to have to answer any questions.
Questions on that report? Seeing none. Okay, we will move on to unfinished business. First up is a public hearing on a resolution of the Township of Ferguson Center County in Pennsylvania on the submission of a tourism grant application to Happy Valley Adventure Bureau. Ms. Martin?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Provided with the agenda is a resolution advertised for public hearing authorizing the submission of a Happy Valley Adventure Bureau grant application submission. This will be the third year that the Township has provided support for the Route 45 Getaways event. And through, an example of that support is through the submission of what we refer to the acronym HVAC, representing Happy Valley Adventure Bureau. The HVAC grant submission in an amount not to exceed $3,500, the, for the grant match. The, and the requirement for HVAC guideline is that there is a match that is 25% of the awarded amount. Last year, the Township requested in the application consideration for funds in the amount of $30,000. This year, I believe in conversations with our representative on that committee, there is an estimated grant application amount that we're requesting in the amount of $10,000. But provided with the agenda is a copy of the resolution for the board's consideration.
Thank you. This is a public hearing, so I'll open the public hearing and ask for comments on this item. And seeing none, I will close the public hearing and ask for a motion. Anyone care to make that motion?
I will move that the Board of Supervisors adopt, I mean, yeah, adopt the, the motion in item 10, one. Sorry.
This is Patty. I'll second.
Okay. Any further discussion on this item? Laura?
Thanks so much. I have a couple of questions. I believe that that, I'm sorry, I'm getting some feedback, which is why I'm doing a weird pausing thing when I'm talking. Okay, I think it's up. I think it's done now. I just have some questions. I think my grant program can run for two years, and I know, working with that committee, what I've seen happen is that because the grants aren't awarded until beginning of June, and the event happens in the end of July, what typically the committee, this will be their third year, what they have done in the past is they've utilized carryover funds into the next year, so in January, February, March, April, and May, they can start planning for the event to happen in July, and then they get the infusion of dollars from HVAC in June. So that, sorry, that's a very long intro, because you know how grant cycles are and events. But my question is, the way the agenda is written here, let me get back to that. If awarded, funds would be used in accordance with the HVAC guidelines and in support of the 2023 Route 45 Getaways event. In reality, the funds would be used for support of that event, and then hopefully into the next year to have that bridge to carry over again in January, February, March, April, and May, when you're hearing about it in June for a July event, right? So instead of having, my concern is the way it's written in the agenda, if it's, if all the, the grant money is used in 2023, the committee won't have six months to plan the next event, they'll have one in 2024. So I don't know, I'm looking at the resolution, and I'm just trying to see if, whoops, now I'm not, sorry. I, I see the narrative, and now I'm looking at the resolution, and I'm trying to figure out if the resolution, how it's written, would allow for, oh yeah, fiscal guidelines 2023, 2024, would that allow for that crossover into the next year of funds? Because like, let's say the committee was awarded $10,000, and then they had the match, and then they spent $8,000 on the 2023 event, and they wanted to have the, whatever, the two plus the match, the next five months to spend. Would this resolution written this way allow for that, or would it need to be changed? Thanks for allowing me that indulgent lead-in to that question.
So the way the grant, the resolution is written as well as the narrative, particularly with reference to the HVAC guidelines, would permit if staff felt necessary to request for an extension? That could happen as part of the grant guideline at the determination based on the grant, the event, and in coordination with the Finance Department, would determine if we would decide... and in coordination with the finance department would determine if we would decide a time extension would be necessary.
Thank you so much. And then the other question is, if this resolution were to pass, would the steering committee need to wait? They would need to, as I understand it, right now, they would, if it were to pass, they would need to wait until the HVAC potential award to receive the match. So right now, they would not receive the match. It would be pending the award, correct?
Does not comment on that at all.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, we have a motion in a second. This is a roll call vote. If I'm correct, roll call vote for this?
Yes, Madam Chair. This is roll call vote for Resolution 2023-10. Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Gracie Griffin?
Yes.
Ms. Dinenny?
Yes.
Ms. Strickland?
Yes.
Thank you. Resolution passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay. Next up is a discussion of anticipated construction costs for Contract 2022-C21 Pine Grove Mills Bike and Pedestrian Improvement. So I'm going to look to Mr. Magricker for that.
Good evening. At the last meeting, I discussed with you some of the options to construct various alternatives for a particular project. And this is the bike and pedestrian improvements in Pine Grove Mills. The township received $700,000 in grant funding through the TASSA Transportation Alternative Set Aside Program, $50,000 in liquid fuels. That's to fund construction. And so one of the first things that staff did, and this, I should back up a little bit. The project is consistent with the mobility study that was done in Pine Grove. And in totality, the project as submitted in the grant includes widening on SR 45 for bike lanes from a point about 375 feet west of the church to Ross Street. It includes all new sidewalks up 26th up Pine Grove Mountain to Chestnut Street. It includes a rectangular rapid flashing beacon on Nixon, your Sunday Drive where we have a bike crossing. And it includes sharrows through town, share the road, appropriate signs, line striking. So, so the township followed a PennDOT process and entertained proposals from various consultants, selected McCormick Taylor, then entered into a scope and fee negotiations. And I came back to the board and, you know, talked about what those costs were, as well as the fact that there may be some additional construction costs based on the field views that were conducted with PennDOT and some additional information that we learned. So what have we done since then? We have negotiated what we think is the best price that we can with our consultant. In addition, I put together some various options that I call de-scoping options. And a few of them are in your packet, some are not, in the event that the board wanted to talk about de-scoping the project to try to keep down our design costs and construction costs. When we do that, we don't build everything, you know, that we had anticipated. The other thing that we looked into, we were, it was suggested from PennDOT and Center Region Planning Office that perhaps we could enter into a design contract for everything and then construct in phases. And we can do that, although it ends up being additional design costs because we can't have our consultant design everything and then just cut it in two or three pieces. You have to put together separate bid packages, go through the, it's called the PSNE review of PennDOT, wherever we got to acquire right away, separate right away plans. So unfortunately, when I looked at the consultant to price out segments, when you add the segments up, they're significantly more than if we were to do the whole project. So in front of you tonight is a resolution to authorize the manager to enter into a professional services agreement with McCormick Taylor. As it's presented, that design contract is for the, the full scope of the grant. To further, well, try not to complicate the matter. But if we wanted to extend the eastern terminus, the eastern point where we end, not right at the transition between 25 and 45, but to where the curb begins down along Deepwood Drive, there would be some additional construction costs that's not, I'm going to say it's not significant. But the design fee beyond what you see in your, in your packet would increase 18,700. So if the board chose to award the entire design and include that additional piece to Deepwood, that, that design service fee is not to exceed $356,658.32. And I think what I should probably do is pause here and see what questions you have and how I might help frame, you know, your decision.
Madam Chair, if you don't mind, I'm just going to chime in here.
Thank you, Dave. That was a really thorough, nice review. And as part of that discussion, naturally, you may have seen seamlessly, we blend the two agenda items, item two and item three. Item two is really a discussion, as, as Dave shared, he did a de-scoping option. And the de-scoping options really focus on the cost estimates for construction. And item three is focusing on a resolution to authorize the manager to execute an agreement with McCormick Taylor that focuses on cost for design. And so I think Dave kind of did a nice package of item two and three. So I just wanted to, to acknowledge that the two items have really been nicely captured by Dave. But this first item two is to acknowledge that, you know, TASSA, the Transportation Set Aside Program, awarded the township with a $700,000 award. And if you look at the de-scoping options and the inclusion of the extension of, I think Dave said, 375 feet of extension there to Deepwood, that that total cost is just a little over a million dollars for construction. And that exceeds the dollars that the township is expecting to receive for construction for this mobility project. But it does represent all of the items that are recommended from the, from the mobility study, as well as what's being recommended by the township engineer, which is to extend to Deepwood the, the additional footage of the project. And so as you, as you give consideration to the construction package, if you would, based on the options that are presented to you, that informs then the execution of the, of the agreement presented to you in item three, acknowledging that if you went with the option where we do everything, the design cost, we would enter into an agreement with McCormick Taylor in an amount not to exceed $353, the exact amount as referenced by Dave Magricker.
Yeah. And the, the options I did not go through in detail as I was speaking. I can, I can do that. I don't know how much detail you want to go into. I included a few of the many options that I ran. But, but basically, if you, if you think about it, we've got, we've got widening on, on SR 45, right? We got a sidewalk going up Water Street. Now, there's a good section of that that currently has sidewalk. And there's about 200 feet missing at the end. So one of the options was, you know, we don't touch the existing sidewalk and improve it, rather we just build on the end. There's option to install a rectangular rapid flashing beacon on Nixon Road. But some of the options don't include that. And so really, I ran different scenarios to see how close could we get to $700,000? And what would it cost if we wanted to do everything? And keep in mind, there has been no design done. So what looked like maybe detailed estimates for me are really preliminary estimates just based on some quantity takeoffs and current unit pricing and information that we know now. And I guess the other piece I would say is if you do de-scope it, I do have to go through the process with PennDOT and get that approved. I believe they'd look favorably on it. What they're, what they're mostly interested in doing is do all the design now and then consider if you wanted to phase the construction in the future.
Thanks. Since we're familiar with the project and the components of it, I think we can just start with particular questions or maybe preferences if somebody's leaning one way or another. So we can start, I'll start with Patty over here.
Yeah. Well, based on the options that were in the agenda, the de-scoping and staying closer to budget is something that appealed to me.
So three or four?
Yeah, yeah. I, yeah.
Okay. Jeremy?
I'm thinking option four kind of need to be like on the site there. But it looks like the existing sidewalk on Water Street is pretty much getting maybe near to the time to probably be replaced. So before pouring any concrete on that street, probably just look at that for another day.
Thanks. I see Laura's microphone off, so we'll go to Laura first.
Thanks. I have a question first. I'm sorry, I'm getting feedback again. My question is, oh, it's resolved now. My question is, I don't think any of these options include a thing, but I'm going to ask, Dave, do any of these options include the single lot length link between Cecil Urban Park property along Nixon and, embarrassed, that road, it's not Lois, is it? The left, the first left turn coming into Pine Grove Mills.
Chester or Sunday?
It is Sunday. Thank you. Whomever said that. Yeah. So that single lot length between Sunday and Cecil Urban Park is not connected by sidewalk. I know we don't have park in there yet, but my understanding was that was part of this project. Is that actually part of the park plan project?
The manager is nodding her head yes, it is part of the park project. And I'm nodding my head no, it's not part of this project.
Okay. All right. Then those answers are consistent, even though they're different. Very good. Thank you. Would you like to hear my thoughts on the option I'd prefer us to go with?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Well, I agree of trying to bring it closer to budget. I do, I would not choose option four though, because I think that the Water Street adding that 220 feet of missing sidewalk for that, like less than $50,000. And that's the only, that's the only additional difference between option three and option four. That, doing that is going to provide a lot of access to that state forest access point. In fact, it provides the entire village access to that really. So I think that that is a really valuable component to include. So then I'm looking at the jumps between, the jump between option three and option four then, or I'm sorry, option three and option two, goes down in option numbers, up in cost, is really significant. So I, and I also still, I'm, I'm a little bit still questioning, I know it would be, I, it would be great to be able to have everything we want, but I'm questioning spending money on the flashing beacon there because we are really trying to be careful with our budget. So that's why I wouldn't go up to option two level. But frankly, if we're just going to do option four, honestly, I would actually vote for us not to do anything. So not to be like a fuddy dudded about that, but I really just, I, I think that that connects a single neighborhood. And while that's not, not valuable, I, I hate to even, you know, have to really be so picky like this because it would be great to just be able to freely connect everyone, but we have a limited budget. But, you know, being resource wise, that other sidewalk connection, that connects neighborhoods to the post office and the rest of the village. And it connects the entire village to the state forest, which if you look in the Pine Grove Mills Small Area Plan, is an asset that's really highly valued for the folks that live there and is probably one of the reasons why even some people moved to that village. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I just want to confirm that part of the resolution that was adopted at the last meeting to submit a grant to DCNR for Cecil Urban Park, Cecil Urban Park Phase 2.1, I believe, does include the extension of the sidewalk from the neighborhood into town. And I'll look to the assistant manager to confirm because he's submitting that grant application.
Great. Thank you for checking on that. And Corey, thoughts on this item?
I, I don't have any strong opinions besides trying to keep us on budget. You know, I, your board member Dinenny's request about the sidewalk, and I think she knows this area much better than I do. And so I'm, I'm happy to go with option three or option four.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions. One would be how would de-scoping, what is your thought on how de-scoping would affect the grant?
I think I would have that discussion with PennDOT and I believe they'd look favorably on it. I know when I have had that discussion, they referred me to Central Office, then Central referred me back to District Two. And then District Two really encouraged us to do all of the project and try to phase the construction. And I said, we may or may not be able to do that. So.
It seems like the Nixon flashing beacon component is kind of a easy pullout one that we could possibly go in later and apply for something else, especially as we're going, yeah.
Do it ourselves.
Okay, yeah.
At least the design. Going through the PennDOT process is, is costly for, when it's an add-on to an existing project, but as a standalone, that's probably something that staff can design.
Okay.
And whether we want to go for construction funds at, through the TASSA program, you know, we may be able to get the construction funds that way.
Okay. And then, yeah, I just, I would say that I wouldn't want to take out the additional sidewalk. I'm okay with not reconstructing the existing sidewalk on Water Street. But I think that's such a good component of this project is extending that sidewalk up there because people do walk there. And there's, it's a real safety concern. And then I'm wondering with option three, would there be the option of including that widening from Deepwood Drive into option three, since that's near the school as well? So that's kind of another functional part of this.
I did a option seven that you don't have that includes that piece.
You did a lot of options. Thanks for doing all that. Okay. Yeah.
And I have, if you, I, I have the engineer's estimate for what that would be for the design fee.
Okay.
Which is basically what you're referring to is option three plus extending it to Deepwood.
That's, yeah. That would be my vote. I would want, I think that's what I would be supportive of at this point. I heard a lot of option threes and maybe fours. So can we come to a consensus here? Laura?
What does extend, what does extend to Deepwood mean? I, I think I'm for it, but does it mean the widening that happens to Ross? I think I'm for it, but does it mean the widening that happens to Ross goes into Deepwood? Or if so, because I, if so, I'm confused because isn't, isn't there sidewalk at Deepwood? Yeah, there's sidewalk between the Deepwoods. So I guess, is it at the first Deepwood on the west that is where the sidewalk ends, begins?
Yes. So as we, as we did a field view and, and we're reviewing design concepts, the township engineer's suggestion was that our best transition from a bike lane widened shoulder to sharrows would be to bring that widening into where the curb starts, which is at, at Deepwood. It's offset on one side and the other. But basically, yes, it's running that widened shoulder from Ross to about Deepwood. So it extends that distance. I forget how many hundred feet, but we were 300 some feet past the church, so maybe it's, you know, 600, 700 feet total.
Okay, I have a question about that then, and this would just be, you know, sometimes I think too far outside the box for the care of like how government functions. So I'm acknowledging that before I say what I'm about to say. So I'm just am noticing, you know, if you look across the street there on Google Maps at the church, they have sidewalk on one half of their church property and not on the other half. And I'm not going to speak for them, but I feel like they probably would grant us an easement if we could cost share or pay for the sidewalk portion of that. So when we're talking about the widening, the whole way to Deepwood, I don't doubt that if we just kept ourselves in the widening box, that that would be the transition. I'm looking, that is where, oh, they know there's sidewalk on the left-hand side too there. But my question is, maybe just a stub. My question is, is it too far outside the box to consider, you know, paying for the sidewalk if we're granted an easement for free on the church property and then stopping the widening there because that's where the sidewalk begins? Is that, is that a possibility? And is it too late to even talk about it if it even is?
So it may be a possibility. It's not in the current scope. And when you think about ending the widening, don't think about sidewalk, think about curb. So really, it's how we're transitioning bikes from, from riding on a bike lane adjacent to the road to where, to where you have now a curb section where we would have sharrows. And so that's really what the transition is about.
Okay. Now that I've put that out there about that sidewalk, is it something that someone might say to somebody else to just incorporate this possibility? Because even though you're talking about curbs and sharrows and bikes, you know, I'm talking about kids coming to the farmer's market and families with strollers and dogs and stuff walking down that road. So I just wonder if that can just be tossed into the mix, maybe not formally, but like as something that people think and talk about as they proceed down this pathway? If that's possible?
So in terms of if it's possible, we'd have to review the scope with PennDOT, get an estimate from the designer, and then estimate the construction cost.
Yeah, I think that's outside of this, though, right? That would, so are you, you're talking about additionally, a separate item, not incorporated into this plan?
I guess. I mean, I've looked at that area a lot. Just, I, I guess I'm still thinking about this fantasy that we're going to be able to connect, you know, the Piney Ridge neighborhood with a sidewalk. Because, you know, my understanding is that the agricultural easement doesn't extend the whole way to Route 45 down there. And if that landowner was willing to, you know, grant us some of an easement there, it's just another, like, nice, nice shot into town that we could connect through sidewalks. So I'm just always thinking about that, but yeah, it's probably, I guess, outside the project.
Yeah, I'm going to suggest we hold off on that and just look for a motion on this item now, since this is what Dave needs to have feedback on. So is somebody ready to make a motion? I think we had talked about three. I had suggested including onto option three widening of Deepwood. If, you know, you may include that or you may not wish to, but if somebody would care to make a motion.
I'll move, option, I'll move that the Board of Supervisors select option three with an inclusion of widening to Deepwood as our selected option.
Thank you. Is there a second?
This is Patty, I'll second.
Thanks. Any other discussion on this item? Yes, would you like to make public comment?
Sure.
Okay, if you could come up to the podium and just give us your name, your township of residence, and keep your comments to about five minutes.
I can be quicker than that. Ron Gilligan, Ferguson Township. I heard a lot of talk about in, in Pine Grove Mills with sidewalks, and that sounds great. But then I heard Ross thrown in there somewhere. Ross is a mile out of town. And are there going to be sidewalks out to Ross or just widening of roads and taking people's property for the bikes? Well, same thing. Okay. And we did that at Whitehall Road, and I just hope that the police and everybody can keep the bikes where they're supposed to be. Because we, just all we get done is fighting for bikes wide on Whitehall Road after spending $10 million to widen the road, and then try and get them off to the curb or off to where they're supposed to be and get the finger. And then if you're going to do that, am I understanding it right? You're going to spend $350,000 for a company to look into this for a $700,000 grant, is going to cost a million dollars to do it, which we know will cost a million and a half till it's over. Does that sound about correct?
So Madam Chair, we didn't get to that piece of it yet.
That'll be the next item.
All right.
We're talking about design. So if you want to go ahead and include your...
And then lastly, just, then lastly, Ms. Denini, as far as getting an easement across John Campbell's farm to get from Piney...
I don't think we need to speak directly to this, you can just address your comments to me, I'd appreciate it.
It's just, I'll speak for Mr. Campbell, the farmer. If you're going to try and get an easement through him someday to get from Piney Ridge to Pine Grove Mills, that will take an act of God. So just be prepared for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments on this item before we go to a vote?
I was just going to ask with option three, as shown in the agenda packet, $761,000, what would the new price tag look like for what motion is on the table now?
So to widen SR 45 from the eastern terminus of Deepwood Drive to the western terminus of Ross Street, which is about 4,915 linear feet each side, and then construct the missing 220 feet section of sidewalk along 26 nearest Chestnut, that's what we're talking about, right? If, that's, I believe, the, that, that design fee is $268,150.
Okay. If you could please hold it. Okay, any other board discussion? I'll take one more round of board discussion here. Since we have a lot of public members, I'll open it back up to the public. If you'd care to share your comments, please come up to the podium and share your name, your township of residence, and keep your comments to under about five minutes.
Hi, my name is Anthony Deglumini, Ferguson Township. I just have one, well, a couple things. Was there a, you are all intelligent people, and I'm sure, was there a traffic study done on this route? This is my route into work every day, down Route 45 and over through Pine Grove Mills. This route is highly trafficked in the morning. Between the traffic coming down the mountain and everybody trying to get onto Route 45, and, and the people coming down through 45 speeding up, coming through the 15 miles an hour through the school zone and speeding up to get into Pine Grove Mills to get to work in the morning. This area is very, 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 very congested as it is. And to put a bike, to put bikes on there now with the traffic and the mountain traffic coming down from the people from Huntington, Huntington and, and, you know, McAlavy's Fort and wherever they're coming to work, and State College and Ferguson Township, I think is, is a, is going to be a real mess. Just my personal opinion.
Thank you. I'll just comment that that's already a state bike route. So bikes are already permitted, there's actually a state bike route on there.
We do not have lanes for them now. I traveled that way home on Route 45, and the weather's just starting to warm up. I saw a couple bikers today, but when you have specific lanes for bikers, bikers to travel in and they're marked out, you're going to get a lot more bikers than, you know, just if you don't have a bike path.
Thank you. And I'll add too that that road is also going to be added to the national, a national bike corridor too. So it will probably steadily increase. And I'll just comment that there have been traffic studies, there was a mobility study, and it's also part of the Pine Grove areas, Pine Grove Mills Small Area Plan study. So that's where all of this has come from, been heavily researched. So I'd like to go to final board comment at this point, but look to Dave Modricar first, if you have anything else you'd like to say in response.
I was just going to add some more commentary, but it sounds like we're moving on.
No, I'd appreciate your commentary.
Oh, you would?
Yes.
Okay. It is a good question, and I guess additionally, I think what I would add is that when the township submitted the grant application and then subsequently had field views with PennDOT, PennDOT did issue a letter to the township authorizing the installation of a bike lane on that road, given the traffic volumes. And we are hiring a design professional that will design any of those improvements in accordance with all PennDOT standards for the, for the speed limits and traffic volumes that we have. So that's all I wanted to add.
Thank you. And Laura, final comments?
Thanks so much. I was just going to reinforce what you had said, Chair Strickland, that there has been extensive public input in terms of connecting these neighborhoods where many individuals live and seek to visit with their neighbors in town. And whether it takes an act of God or an act of the township, we're pretty committed to achieving that goal. So I hope that our friends and our neighbors that live further west and participate in the commute through the village at excessive speeds can all remember that we do live in a community where we need to look out for each other and slow down when we're driving through that village. And any discussion of any intention of implementing any of the myriad plans that point to this as a solution would be remiss if it did not mention the serious safety concerns that we very, very frequently air in these public meetings about the speeding situation in Pine Grove Mills. And as the previous chief said to me, I'll say to you now, look at behind, who's behind those wheels? It's your neighbors. So, thank you.
Thanks. I'll just conclude by saying, as a result of all of these studies that have gone on, really the priority has been improving safety in that area, seeing so many people cross that road, especially, you know, by the school. So we've just been trying to work on improving conditions there. Connectivity is great, but I think the overall safety questions have been what we've been trying to address. And it's wonderful that we have this grant come in now. The timing of the grant is in our choosing, so there is a lot of infrastructure money out there. So it's great that we can take advantage of it at this time. So, yes.
I did want to add, because you don't have this in front of you, that with the option that you're discussing, the current construction estimate, and this includes inspection, contingency administrative costs, is about $780,000. And you have $700,000 in TASA grant and $50,000 in liquid fuels grant.
Great, okay.
So I think you're, I think you're really close there.
Thank you.
That could change as the design continues, but based on what we know now.
Right. Okay, thank you very much. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say no. Okay, thank you. So we will move on now to a public hearing on a resolution of the Township of Ferguson Center County, Pennsylvania, authorizing the manager to execute an agreement with McCormick and Taylor. We'll go back to Mr. Modricar.
So, given the last action item, we're recommending, our staff recommends that the Board of Supervisors authorize the township manager to sign a agreement and contract for professional services with McCormick Taylor. And this would be for the option that you discussed, in an amount not to exceed $268,150.
Thank you. Okay, this is a public hearing, so I'll open the public hearing for comments on this item. If anyone would wish to make comments on this. And seeing none, I will close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
All right, I'm confused. So I moved that the Board of Supervisors, now the amount that's listed in the motion here is different than what Dave just said, right?
Correct.
Correct, the scope changed.
The scope changed.
It'll be $268,150.
Okay.
Is that correct? Yeah.
$268,150, okay. So I moved that the Board of Supervisors authorize the township manager to sign, what is this, the agreement and contract for professional services with McCormick Taylor, Inc., in the amount not to exceed 200. Can you help me with that one more time? That amount. This is Patty.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Laura, I second.
Thank you. Okay, discussion. Seeing none, all the, oh, I'm sorry, it's a roll call vote. Yes, this is a roll call vote for Resolution 2023-11. Mr. Gracie Griffin?
Yes.
Ms. Denini?
Yes.
Ms. Strickland?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Resolution passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay, next up is a public hearing on a resolution of the Township of Ferguson Center County, Pennsylvania to approve Fairbrook Park Master Plan. Mr. Progar?
Thank you, Chair. In August 2021, the Township engaged consultant HRG to conduct an update to the recreation parks and other specific space plan led by Tracy Strickland. An addendum to that project included the master planning process for Fairbrook Parks. Aside from that, HRG engaged citizens to be at multiple public input events, including municipal mixer, I'm sorry, including municipal mixer and Howard Greenbrier Central Park in August of 2022. Additional input was received from Parks Recreation Committee to deliver and draft master plans with Board of Supervisors. The passionless agenda is a copy of Fairbrook Park Master Plan. And the, how should I move this? The March 7th, the board authorized advertisement of a public hearing to consider approval of the Fairbrook Park Master Plan by resolution. Tracy's with us tonight to answer any questions.
Thank you. Ms. Strickland, did you have anything you care to present?
I have been disabled from sharing the screen, and I have screen check? Fantastic. Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Can you hear me okay and can you see my screen?
Yes, thank you.
Great, thanks. What I'm going to do is I'm going to zoom in real quick. From the meeting on March 7th, we heard a couple key points of input, which we have addressed on the plan here tonight. I'm going to zoom in to the right-hand side where our sports fields are located. We have removed the storage shed that had been on the plan previously.
Yeah, this is, I just like told Connor, I was like, I'm holding you personally.
And I, okay, sorry, I wasn't sure. Can you hear me?
Yes, I'm sorry, you can continue.
Yes, we can hear you, Ms. Strickland. There was just some background noise, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. One of the requests was to remove the storage shed, so we have done that. I'll zoom out a little bit. We have kept the existing small ball field intact and updated its label to say optional removal of ball field. And then we took the proposed sports field and moved them off of the diamond mix infield area of that ball field and reduced the size of the rain garden to the north to help all of that fit together. And then we updated the label here also to say optional proposed use soccer fields in this location. Those were the primary requests in that particular location of the plan as of two weeks ago when we all looked at this. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe those were the key changes there. And then we updated some important labels here to say the existing environmental education woodlands and paths within this location to remain. And then similarly to the west side of the property, we updated this label to say existing woodland walk and path system to remain as well. All other proposed elements and amenities in the park plan remain the same. So those were the changes that we made as of that previous meeting. Does that reflect your comments from two weeks ago? Did I miss anything or any other questions?
I believe that captured it.
Good.
All right, well, if that's the end.
Yes, thank you so much. I feel like we talked a long time and then it took you just moments to review that. I'm disoriented, but yes, I believe you've got them all. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, okay. This is a public hearing, so I'll open the public hearing for comments on this item. If anyone online or in the room would like to comment on this item. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
I move that the Board of Supervisors adopt the resolution for Fairbrook Park Master Plan.
This is Patty, I'll second.
Okay, any other discussion on this item? Laura?
Hi, thank you so much. I just again wanted to thank our consultant, Ms. Strickland with HRG. Throughout this process, they've just been incredibly accessible, professional, and just the work has just been so well done on everything that they have done. And so I wanted to say thank you. And then also I wanted to turn to my fellow supervisors and just urge us all to really continue to consult that RPOS plan that was completed by our consultants. I have repeatedly consulted the regional recreation plan. What I do find is that sometimes we as elected officials fail to follow our plans because of central, special interest pressure. I do find that that pressure has made its way into this plan. I am still going to vote to adopt this plan because I think that the work that's been done on it is very professional, but I'm going to hold us accountable to things like our findings that we actually exceed our field, soccer field provision according to NRPA standards. And we strive to naturalize our flood plains and our bodies of water back to a state that can absorb, recharge stormwater. And I think that we should really strive to live by these plans that have so much public input. So while we hear loud voices of special interests urging us that we need to spend hundreds of thousand dollars installing stormwater conveyance within flood plains of bodies of water, let's remember that what our RPOS plan says is restore those bodies of water. We have met our needs for these soccer fields. And I hope that in the future, the boards will be able to move us further in that direction. So I do appreciate this opportunity to comment. I, I hope to be able to remain around to follow the implementation of this plan and to continue to be a voice for things that are found in our RPOS plan and our regional parks plan, to continue to feed and inform our plans such as this. So thank you. Thank you very much.
If there's no other discussion, I'll too say thank you so much to Ms. Strickland for all of your assistance with this and guidance in producing this. It's so impressive and the work together with you has been very enjoyable and thank you again.
Thank you very much. It's been a pleasure working with all of you and helping your community improve the amazing park system that you have already. Thanks again.
Thank you. So we have a motion and a second and this is a roll call vote. Thank you. Madam Chair, roll call vote for Resolution 2023-12. Mr. Gracie Griffin?
Yes.
Ms. Dinenny?
Yes.
Ms. Strickland?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Resolution passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay, on to new business. The first item up is the consent agenda. Would anyone like to pull anything from the consent agenda?
Hi, yes, sorry, I'm struggling to find my screen. I do believe I need to pull something, one moment. Yes, I need to pull the board member request for the ARPA information. If the Chair would entertain a place on the agenda under new business to place a brief discussion of why, thank you. So I would move, well, actually that doesn't need, require a motion because it's the consent agenda, so that's just a request. Thank you.
Correct, okay. So do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda minus item A?
So moved. This is Patty.
So moved by Laura.
Seconded by Patty.
Thank you. Any other comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, say no. Thank you. And so we will go to the removed item, Board Member Request, ARPA. Did you want to comment briefly on that? We won't have a discussion, but just to comment on why that was pulled.
Yeah, thank you so much. Yeah, I had just, I had placed this on agenda just to refresh my memory about some very specific previously discussed earmarks of our ARPA funds, but I actually got the information that I needed already, so I'm already a step ahead and I'm going to make another agenda item that relates directly to the, the information that I was trying to get with this item. So you'll see in the future just a discussion on economic development. So I'd just like to pull this. There's no need to have staff do extra work because it's already been answered, so thanks.
Thank you, okay. We had our agenda order changed, so now we are going to move to what was item number nine under new business, and that is the Board Member Request, Request for Parking Study on Dibler Road. Ms. Dinenny?
Thank you so much. So I'm just hopping back to our narrative here. And locating that further down in the agenda, if you'll give me just a moment. Okay, thank you. So I think that it may be the case that Dibler might have been spelled wrong in the title of this. And there's like this very kind of weird, long history to that where once upon a time Ferguson Township put incorrectly spelled signs up there. I think that's been corrected though, but now Google Maps has, I think it's spelled wrong. So anyway, I had submitted this request that you can see in the narrative is really based on general recommendations of our strategic plan. We highly value safety and being responsive to residents generally. There have been concerns expressed over a period of time, I'm not going to say stretching into my first term, but several years, I'm not sure, I'm kind of bad on judging time, but expressed about parking patterns on Dibler Road, specifically when there are events. My understanding, the last time this, I guess, kind of was brought to me, my understanding was there was going to be some effort made to make parking plans and then adhere to them and then that they would be enforced by the township. And like, and like, I don't think it's a law in every township to park going the direction of traffic, but I think it's a law in our township, if I remember correctly, when we were really stepping up enforcement on the Naked Egg, when they were parking caddywampus around there, I believe that that was confirmed, that, you know, we do require cars to park in the direction of traffic. So when, when the concern was brought to me, I, I just, it hadn't, it, it wasn't the first time it had been brought. And despite the fact that there was to be increased awareness in that area and increased enforcement, it seemed like the problem was continuing. So I just thought, you know, it's a safety issue and it should be brought to the Board for discussion in terms of perhaps having a parking study there to see if indeed there are, you know, sight line issues that are of concern, if there are safety issues that are of concern, just doing our due diligence. I know that in the past, we've done parking studies based on request. This was my thought, parking study would be the place to start, just as a basic, getting the data. But, you know, I'm open to suggestions of other places to start that would actually be effective. So, yes, that's, that's it. And so I'm just asking the Board to consider a request for a parking study. The scope is relatively small. It's just one section of Dibler Road where events are typically held. And I think that that is where the, the effects are, are being felt there in that localized area. So that would be what I wanted to discuss. So that's, if anybody has any questions, feel free to ask me. If staff has anything to add about the previous time, this had been, I think, discussed publicly, you know, I think that we were assured perhaps by that entity that, that there was going to be proper parking. I'm not, I'm not really fully recalling, but I do recall, I do recall that there was going to be some equal expectations. So like I know being involved with the farmer's market at that place of assembly, like we needed a site drawing and a plan on how to handle traffic. And I think that then that expectation was going to be held for the, this other place, you know, like, I'm just not sure where that was left because the photos that then came back to me had all the caddywampus parking again. So maybe staff has an update about kind of how that enforcement was going out there or anything, but I, I hadn't had any other report on that. Thank you. Maybe start there. Staff report on, on how enforcement's going out there and, and whether there's a plan. And then if there's no plan, or if there is a plan, maybe is that being enforced and maybe we need a parking study. If all those things are in place, maybe the next step is parking study. Thank you.
Okay, I'll look to staff first if you had anything you wanted to input before I go to board comments.
I appreciate the opportunity, but there's nothing that we have to comment on.
Thank you. Okay, so let's go to board discussion.
I'm sorry, could I follow up with that?
Certainly.
Because just my memory, I don't know if other people were here, but I'm pretty sure, wasn't the zoning administrator going to follow up with the parking plan and there was going to be, is that not, he?
No, there's nothing that we have, that, that we have noted as an open item for follow-up.
So is there, is there a parking plan that was established and it doesn't need follow-up? Maybe Ms. Worgo, I saw you popped your camera on. I don't know if you have information about it or?
Yeah, Jeff and I, we, I do not recall that the parking plan was going to be part of our process, but we have done. There were a few outstanding issues going on at this site with food trucks and noise permits aspect. So I do believe last year, we addressed all of that with this specific property. They did get all the food truck permits that were required. I know that Jeff went out to that site to check the noise aspect of this with our noise meter. And I know that prior to these events and after they take place, we go out and inspect to make sure that trash has been picked up because that has been a complaint that we have heard in the past, just to ensure that there are no issues on that front. And Jeff and I have not had any issues with any of those things.
Thanks so much, Jenna. I wonder if the chief, since this is specific to parking, I was not aware of those other issues. I appreciate hearing about that. But since this is specific to parking, I wonder if, since zoning doesn't have any information on that parking aspect of this or a site plan kind of thing, I wonder if the chief has any information or even could ground me for sure that we do indeed have an ordinance that does ask that all parked cars be parked going in the direction of traffic. My recollection was we did have that. Maybe we do not.
I would have to look into that, Ms. Dinenny, but yes, the vehicle code does require that individuals park in the direction of their travel lane so that people are not crossing as they're pulling away from a curb. And as to the best of my knowledge, I do not believe any citations or parking tickets have been issued on that roadway.
Well, I don't know if they were included for, you know, for, I don't know, confidentiality or whatever, but, you know, multiple pictures have been shared with me of cars not following that out, I mean, regularly not following that. So I, that's what really made me think, you know, a parking study is necessary before we sign, or perhaps it is not. But I, I think that, given the pattern that I've seen through the photographs and the words that I've heard here tonight, you know, they're definitely not, not following the motor code in terms of the parking pattern out there. And I think it would probably be our obligation to, to address that somehow, open to how.
I have a question. So what's the frequency of the events going on out there that this is a problem?
Do you know, Laura?
My past experience, they range, typically they died down more in the winter, they increased when it's warmer. I think it was COVID that really pushed these events to be held outside because the hall is so small and the occupancy requirements during that. And with that, I think they were able to get more people to come out from the community to participate in this. And that's really been the issues, at least since I've been here at the township. So I think if I remember correctly, at least last summer, when I was looking at, if there's any out there, I would estimate twice a month, sometimes more.
And are they usually on the weekends?
Usually they set up Friday, the event is held Saturday, and then I usually drive out Sunday morning just to check.
Okay. So let's have some more board comment discussion before we go to public comments. So Jeremy?
So my observations of being out on this stretch of Dibler Road, especially when I'm sitting outside the Baileyville Community Hall, I'm able to see both intersections of the road. So I feel there is already inadequate sight, sight distance. Also, I, I, when there are cars parked on the road, it has been proven that it does tend to calm traffic. And really, the only way I can see it being a danger is if somebody was purposely driving erratically on that stretch of road with cars parked. I don't- I don't even think I get up to the speed limit of 25 when I'm over there, because, well, what's the hurry? The road ends like in a blink of an eye. And it's not necessarily like an arterial street, because most people are going to commute through Route 45 or Whitehall Road, and my understanding, there hasn't been a vehicle accident or anything involving a vehicle on there. I, I would be concerned if we were to restrict parking on there, because I believe it would pose an undue challenge on the community hall and even residents that live there that may want to entertain guests at, at their private residences, so. Well, I understand there is, you know, some calls for uniformity and consistency within our practices, I believe the unique composition of our township, and having many properties that predate our ordinances and even the Home and Local Charter, there are going to be unique circumstances where we need to look at scenarios where special exceptions can be warrant, that would be warranted. I do understand, you know, to credit Laura, I do understand the concern of the cars parking in opposite directions of travel, it does, it is common practice that they should be parked in the direction of travel, and I, if that is a concern, I, I don't know why we wouldn't just take it directly up with the folks at the community hall and see what we can work out offline on that.
That's my thought, too. So, let's, and I'll, I'll go last. So, Corey, do you have any comments on this?
I do not.
Thank you.
I was just wondering, if Chief, Patrick, if you have any ideas on potential solutions that we can work out before we actually involve a traffic study, or is?
No, I, I think Mr. Thompson made a valid point. When there's an event, you're able to see it, you normally slow down. I, I think there's a common sense approach to that, in what you said. That's all I have to add. And there is sight distance from both sides, so there's nothing that jumps out at you, it's a straightaway, straight road.
Good question. Anything else from the board, and then I'm going to go to public comment?
I, I don't know, just thinking of solutions outside the parking study, like, would, would anyone have peace of mind if there was maybe even temporary signage to be provided at either end of the road, you know, to give cars that are passing through there a little bit of a heads up?
Can you use flares or something?
Flares, also, since it isn't necessarily an arterial street, like, I'd even be okay just closing the road down to local traffic and the community hall for the event.
That was my thought, too, was, you know, to ask once we are receiving some public comment, you know, what kind of additional signage, any special event permitting, you know, even like a modified special event permitting or something like that. So, yeah, I think there's some creative solutions to be had. So, let me open it up to public comments, because I know we have a lot of folks. Sure, if you could please come up to the podium and give us your name, your township of residence. Thank you. Oh, sure, if you could give them to Mr. Progar, and he could just pass them down for us, I'd appreciate it.
I hope I have enough copies for everybody, I wasn't sure how many we needed. I think, yes.
Hi, thank you. I'm Diane Albright. I live out in Pennsylvania Furnace, and I'm also on the board of the Baileyville Community Hall, and I appreciate the opportunity to talk. The, the stretch of Dibler Road, the first handout that you have is a map, and I did that up in case people weren't familiar with the area, that you could see the actual, and I apologize for those of you that aren't here in person, that you, you can't see this. But basically, it is a straight stretch of road, there's no curves or anything on it. There are eight residences on that road, or that have their driveways access the road. The remainder of the road is agricultural fields, you know, horse pasture, sheep pasture, that kind of thing. So, if you look at the map, you can see, you know, it's a short stretch of road, and yes, Google has Dibler Road spelled wrong, so I noted that on the map. It wasn't a typo, it's from Google. We're not aware of any accidents that have occurred on this stretch of the road, and a lot of the people who live there have lived there for a long time. So, it seems that this parking study is being targeted towards the community hall, so I wanted to give you a little bit of history about the community hall, and to answer your question about how frequently these events occur, we've done an analysis for you. So, the second handout is kind of a fact sheet, but I would like you to kind of focus on items 10 and 11. I mean, the community hall has been there for 90 years, we've been having events there for 90 years, and really, they haven't significantly changed, I want to say, in the past 20 or 25 years. Typically, they are family gatherings, birthday parties, baby showers, holiday events, that kind of thing. But during 2022, there were a total of 74, either full day or half day, events at the, at the community hall. So, that, and that's about an annual average. We keep records, I've been going back for the past eight or nine years and keeping track of the type of rentals that we have. So, that's about 20% of the whole year that the community hall is in use for any kind of an event. 80% of the time, it's sitting there empty, okay? And outside of donations, the rental revenue is our primary or major source of income for the maintenance and operation of the building. Over the past eight years, we've kept detailed records. For last year, the breakout was 5.4% were auctions, 5.2% were family gatherings, which I mentioned, birthdays, baby showers, holiday gatherings, and so, so forth. 5.2 were private meetings, 0.2% were funeral receptions, 2% were hall-sponsored events, and 1.8 is miscellaneous, that we couldn't throw into that category. So, there really hasn't been a significant change in usage in the community hall. It's only in use for about 20% of the time, and the majority of these events are not all-day events. Most of them are like half-day events or an evening, something like that. Dibler Road is a straight stretch of road, as we mentioned, with no real history of accidents or injuries. So, we really feel that, at this point in time, the effort and expense of a parking study is not really warranted. So, thank you.
Thanks very much. Okay, anybody else continue up going this direction? Thank you. If you could state your name, your township of residence at the podium, thank you.
Mine, too, has some handouts.
My name is Dawn Harpster, Ferguson Township. I, too, am a member of the board for the Baileyville Community Hall, and I may repeat some of what Diane has said. In addition to what she has said, we recognize that the basis for this request is the statement from the strategic plan excerpt that, quote, "Every resident and guest deserves to live, work, study, and recreate in a high-quality environment. Therefore, it's our responsibility to properly maintain and provide for the safety of our communities, neighborhoods, streets, parks, and common areas," unquote. In that public input is valued, we have talked with the majority of residents on that stretch of Dibler Road, and they have read and signed the following statements. There's a copy of, for each of you to, to reference, and I will go ahead and read what they have signed. Number one, "I reside on a property having direct access to Dibler Road between Whitehall Road and Route 45. My observation of traffic on this section of Dibler Road is routinely very light on a daily basis." Number three, "Access to Dibler Road via my private driveway is not blocked during any events held at the Baileyville Community Hall." Four, "I recognize that there is an increase in traffic on Dibler Road when the community hall is the site of an event, but the road remains open." Five, "It's my observation that when events are held at the community hall, through traffic usually slows down on its own." Six, "Parking on both sides of Dibler Road during community hall events does not prevent through traffic from passing the hall in either direction." And seven, "I am not aware of any vehicle or pedestrian accidents on this stretch of Dibler Road since I have lived there." Again, Dibler Road is a straight stretch of road with no known history of accidents or incidents that have occurred there. The majority of the residents on that stretch of road do not feel that a traffic study is warranted, and therefore, in conclusion, it's our recommendation that the time, effort, and expense of a traffic study is not warranted. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate your comments. Yes. Again, if you could state your name and township of residence?
Hello, again. My name's Anthony Deglumini Tony. I'm a resident of Dibler Road, the A-frame at the very end of 45 and Dibler. I've been there for 22 years at Dibler Road and witnessed all of the, the events at the Grange, and I am a Grange member, Baileyville Grange. I do not think this warrants a traffic study. I have seen all the events, birthdays, parties, just the, the auctions and everything that goes on there. I haven't seen, I, and I have also seen the, the traffic down at, on 45 for, you know, for the farmer's market, and, I mean, it slows down, and people get into where they're going, and, and traffic resumes. I mean, this, other than that, my road is a country road. There's no need for a traffic study. I mean, if there's, if this warrants anything and people are concerned about cattywampus parking, send a patrol car up. You know, I mean, this is what we pay for, you know, it's already paid, you don't need to spend extra money for a traffic study. That, that is ridiculous. That is the, the most obscene thing I've ever heard. If you want to, if you want to see what's going on, send somebody there to see what's going on. Talk to people. I mean, that's all we need to do is talk. You know, nobody wants to talk, everybody wants to do something and, and, you know, study this and study that. Go there and see what's happening, and you'll see that it's a normal day, traffic will be funneled in to park, and it's a normal country road. And when there's, when there's nobody there, this road is, is desolate, and there's no need for, for the township to come in and put, put up metal barricades there so nobody can park, so that when I have guests over, they, you know, they have to weave through all this stuff to get to my house. I don't want that. I, I hope you all consider that. Thank you.
Thanks very much for your comments.
Chair, just, just one moment, I just wanted to clarify that my request wasn't to consider a traffic, a larger traffic study with car counts and whatnot, so I just wanted to make sure that, you know, I hear the words "traffic study," and that, for me, is something very different than a parking study, and so, if those, you know, maybe need to be explored a little bit, I'm hearing things about barricades and, you know, blocking off streets, and I feel like perhaps maybe there's an elevated level of concern for what's being requested, but just wanted to throw that out there, and thanks.
Thank you. I think, thanks. I think, I'm gathering there's a general understanding of what was requested per the traffic study, but if any other board member would care for clarification, it's a parking study versus a traffic study, which would be, and that's what I assumed, so it's, yeah, thank you, I appreciate that, though. Okay, yes, please, if you could come to the podium and give your name and township of residence.
Ron Gilligan, Ferguson Township. This has been going on for a couple of years. This is about the fifth thing that's come up with the Baileyville Grange Hall, for them not to be able to hold anything there, whether it's the 5% auction or 5% family gathering or funeral gathering or something like that. And it's just brought on by a neighbor who goes to Mistinenee, and it's just one thing after another, after another. I can just get right to the chase. Chief's got some common sense. If we're going to have an event out there, I can get people parked anywhere you want them. If people are saying they're parked cockamamie-ing all over the place, that's BS. I can get cars parked any direction you want them, I can, I put them behind the Grange Hall, I put them in Larry Harpster's pasture, I've done everything I could possibly do to make everybody in the community happy to not have a car on that road, but nothing ever suits. So, we ruined the Grange Hall grass two weeks ago to appease somebody to keep the cars off the road. So, you know what I'll do up there? I'll spend $1,000 fixing the grass this summer, because nobody wants cars on the road. Now, I'm hearing about a parking study. Well, Chief, if we can put cars on one side of the road, keep them off the Baileyville grass, out of Larry Harpster's pasture, I'll do anything you want. I can park them for four miles, two miles, along Dibler Road, one direction, end of story. We're done. And welcome to the township. It's nice to hear somebody with some common sense. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else for public comment on this item? Yes, if you could come to the podium and give your name and township of residence.
My name is Larry Harpster. I live on Dibler Road in Ferguson Township. Our family owns the farm where the original school was taken off, which is now the community hall. We farm the farm along 45. My wife and I passed through that thing, she has sheep over there, and right now, she's over there half a dozen times a day. There has never been a problem where anybody could not get through there. I have never seen cars parking in opposite directions. So, again, to spend a whole pile of money on a parking study is, again, a vast waste of money. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anybody else care to share public comment? I'll continue to look in the room before I go online. Okay, not seeing anybody in the room, we will move to online. I think that's Mr. Heller, with his hand raised.
Yes, good evening, everybody. Matt Heller, Ferguson Township, thank you for the time here. I just want to say, my first experience out at the Baileyville Grange actually happened to discuss the oil spill that occurred over in the Piney Ridge area. I had never been out there, it was dark as, you know, anything on that night, if we all recall that we're out there, it was raining, it was foggy, and the gentleman that we all know and love, Bill Keough, is in the middle of the road with lights and a vest and everything, directing people where to park. So, I thought that was a great way to greet folks that maybe had never been there before, and I just want to applaud Bill and the rest of the, you know, community members for being out there to support and get folks that maybe had not been out there in the past, you know, welcomed and also off the road safely. So, I didn't see an issue at that point, I just wanted to communicate that to the board and everybody else, so, thanks for the time.
Thanks very much. Okay, additional public comment? And I am seeing none. Is there any further board comment? Not seeing any here in the room. Yes, Laura?
Sorry, I was digging around in the agenda, so it looks like the photos that, they did not make it into the agenda then, that were sent with the request? Is that, do, is there, are there any photos in the agenda?
There are.
There are? Okay, good. Okay, there, there are. There, Jeremy, I see Jeremy saying yes, but I don't see anybody else saying yes.
There are. Yes.
Okay. All right, great, thank, thank you. I'm just curious, because in those photos, you see cars going the wrong direction, right? I was just hearing, I was just hearing people say that didn't happen, I, I'm just, were those pictures? I, I'm just, were those pictures included, where the cars are going against travel?
I think that comment was that that was their experience, that they had not viewed that.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I'm sure that not every single time that anyone ever parks there, they're going the wrong direction, but I think with events, you know, I think Mr. Heller was talking about the flashlight and the parking guide, and that was fantastic. I also attended that event. That was fantastic. I just, if somebody's then at these events, parking two miles down one way, or directing somewhere, somewhere, they're directing people to park very wrongly. So there must be a different crew on when the pictures are being taken that were appearing in the agenda, right? So, I'm just, I'm just clarifying some points that, that this is not about nothing. This is an actual, you know, safety concern that's documented in the agenda. And when we've had previous situations like this, that weren't, you know, longtime landowners whose families have lived here for centuries, when they weren't those people that were parking the wrong direction, the police were ticketing in Ferguson Township. So yeah, welcome to Ferguson Township, where we do ticket some and we don't ticket others. Not interested in that being our welcome mat. So I'm interested in consistency, and that's why I placed this on agenda. I know somebody has their theory about why I placed it here. Well, let me be really clear about it. I do believe in fair and uniform application of the law. And when I hear somebody saying, "Ah, it's not a problem if they park the wrong way here, but don't let these people over here park the wrong way," that sends up a major red flag for me. So that's why this is on the agenda. I think it's a safety issue. It's been brought to me multiple times, and I'd like the board to consider it as such. So, everybody's welcome to their opinion. My opinion is it is a safety issue that should be studied like any other area owned by any other person or attended by any other group of individuals in the township. Thank you. That concludes my discussion.
Thanks. And what I did, think I heard as well, was some, you know, agreement to enforce that parking in the direction it's supposed to go. I want, before I go back to public comment, I did want to look to staff to see if there is any additional input at this point before I go back to public comment. But I did, I, that was a comment made, that there could be some onsite efforts to make sure everybody is in, is lined up.
Really, Chair, because what I heard is our chief saying that, that it's fine there, and clearly, we're not looking at the same fixtures. Because I'm looking at a picture where there's a law being broken that would be enforced to, okay.
Yeah, no, that, what he was saying was that is the law, that you do need to park in that correct direction. That was what the chief stated. So, back to public comment. I'm not sure who was first, and I apologize, so you two can pick. Okay, if you want to come on up to the podium and...
Don Harpster, Ferguson Township. To me, that's a problem that is easily corrected and does not warrant a true parking study. Okay, so have the cars parked in the same direction, the direction that they're supposed to be parked in. That's a situation that can be remedied and fixed, not something that demands such attention when it's not been a problem.
Thanks.
Hey, it's the traffic guard himself.
So we have five, okay, we've got five minutes left, and you'll probably be concluding our public comment.
Bill Keough, and I live in Ferguson Township in the western end, and I'm also the chairman of the board for the community hall. Two things have been mentioned that, that I need to respond to. One is reference to the farmer's market in Pine Grove Mills and the fact that we required a parking study be done, and a parking plan be written for that particular location. I think what generated that need was the fact that, at the Lutheran Church, the farmer's market represented a significant change in use, and as a result, it triggered a need to look at making sure there was adequate parking. In the case of the community hall, we have no change in use, and we have a long history of the same use. So that didn't, in our minds, require a parking study. I think one other thing, two other things. One is, at the end of each intersection, we have had the auction group place a sign. So there is signage at Whitehall Road and at Route 45, both announcing that it's an auction day. So it's not like somebody turns in there and has no idea that, that something is going on. They have signs at both ends of that section of Dibler. In addition, in talking with the Gilligan Company and their staff, and father and son, over a year and a half ago, when some issues came up about noise and issues related to the auctions, we had a discussion with the Gilligans. They have someone out at the road directing parking now, and they have been doing that since that discussion took place. So we have entertained and put into place, as the, the Gilligans rent from us, but we went to the Gilligans and said, "We think we need to do this in order to maintain some compliance." And, and so, well, I don't have, they don't have uniformed police out there directing traffic. Ron Senior is frequently out there directing traffic and getting them in the right places and, and following up with that. So I just wanted to clarify those two things. We haven't ignored what occurred a year and a half ago, when we had a discussion. And, and we have put some things in place, and the Gilligans and their auction days have followed through with that. So thank you.
Thanks very much. Okay, additional public comment?
The photographs in question for the, that we have, are, are we allowed to see those?
They're part of the agenda packets. They were...
They're online?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Okay. Are they date stamped?
I could not tell you at this time.
Okay. No? Okay. So we don't know what timeline they're on, or if they were two years ago, or four years ago, or seven years ago? Okay.
Right.
Thank you. Okay, if there's no other public comment, I'll go back to the board. Any additional comments?
I, I just kept looking over these photos, and I, out of six photos that were submitted in the agenda packet, I'm only seeing three cars that were parked incorrectly. It was not like the whole row and every other car. It just seemed like there was just one car, to the best of my visual abilities, was parked incorrectly, but also considering that some of the photos appear to be taken in the wintertime. I can't tell if it was when early 2022 or late 2022. Bill, Mr. Keough, mentioned something was addressed in 2022, so it appears to me, maybe, these pictures, some of these pictures may have been taken after, before that discussion happened, but also, it, it appears the community hall is doing the best to their abilities to get the cars parked correctly. Yeah, maybe one accidentally slips in, but it sounds like something, you know, where all adults can easily be taking care of with the discussion, like, hey, could you move your car around, or, you know, next time when you're here, just be mindful of how you park.
Thank you. And I know we have the timer up here, so I'll go back to any board members online with comments. I think we did hear a lot of commitment, I think, for, you know, to try to get all those cars lined up appropriately. We've heard, confirmed that that is what needs to happen, and, and reinforcement of that, I think, would be appreciated. So I'll look, I see Laura has her microphone off, if you have...
Thanks so much. Yeah, I would, I would just say that if, if all of the effort that folks take to come out and resist the township doing a proper study based on safety concerns, if all the effort that was mustered for the resistance to just following the law, if all that effort was put into following the law and parking in a way that did not go against traffic, or did not interfere with cars passing and having to go across the double yellow lines, if indeed Mr. Gillian comes out with his crew and parks them all down one way and everything is fine, there will be no need to revisit this again. I don't share the optimism of my fellow boardmates, because I was here the last time these things were promised, the last time that there was a big outcry that we dared to address this issue. So, like I said, let's bottle all that up and make the effort like the one that was made during the oil spill event parking, that actually addresses the problem. I would be very enthusiastic to thank you all for doing that in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. I think we're out of time. But I would appreciate if you have any other additional comments, feel free to email them to myself or the manager following the meeting. So I think, well, any, any other comments you have, please feel free to email them to me, if I'd like to chair, or to, to the manager. Thanks. Okay, so if there's nothing else on that item, we are moving back up the agenda here to new business, what was item number two, and that is a proclamation of the Township of Ferguson Center County, Pennsylvania, to officially recognize annual watershed cleanup day. Mr. Progar.
Chair, this proclamation is in support of designating April 22nd, 2023 as watershed cleanup day. Proclamation is...
Thank you, and I'll read the proclamation. This is a proclamation of the Township of Ferguson Center County, Pennsylvania, to recognize April 22nd as watershed cleanup day. If we could please carry our conversations to outside the rooms, so we can carry on, thank you. Whereas on April 22nd, 2023, watershed cleanup day will take place, and whereas this event is organized by Clearwater Conservancy, a nonprofit organization that strives to promote environmental outreach and stewardship of the area's water resources, and whereas Ferguson Township affirms its commitment to environmental stewardship and preserving the quality of life in its mission statement and strategic plan, and whereas on watershed cleanup day, there are a number of local sites and projects in need of volunteers, and whereas this day is an opportunity for community involvement, environmental education, and protection of our natural resources, and whereas last year, 430 volunteers prevented 12,550 pounds of trash from entering our waterways across 47 sites, and now therefore, the Ferguson Township Board of Supervisors does hereby designate April 22nd, 2023 as watershed cleanup day. We encourage all residents, family, and friends of all ages to volunteer for watershed cleanup day 2023 by visiting clearwaterconservancy.org, proclaim this 21st day of March 2023. And I will look for a motion. Oh, yeah, sorry.
I, Laura, move that the Board of Supervisors adopt the proclamation.
This is Patty, I'll second.
Thanks. Any comment on this item? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, say no. Thank you, okay. Not at this time, I'm sorry, not at this time. We've got to keep carrying on.
Drop now, or we got feedback on the meeting, or...
No, there is no action taken.
Forget about it.
Yeah, no action taken on that item.
I want to hear about three weeks ago.
I'm not going to respond to any other items on that, but that's the conclusion of the agenda items on tonight's agenda. Thank you. Okay, up next is a proclamation of the Township of Ferguson Center County, Pennsylvania, to officially recognize workers' memorial day.
Thank you, Chair. This proclamation is in recognition of the sacrifices of workers and working families past and present in the community, and presenting, designating April 28th, 2023 as workers' memorial day. Proclamation is included in the agenda.
Thank you, and I will read the proclamation. This is a proclamation of the Township of Ferguson Center County, Pennsylvania, to recognize April 28th as workers' memorial day. Whereas each April, we observe workers' memorial day to remember those who have suffered injury, hardship, or lost their lives while on the job, and whereas workers' memorial day is observed on April 28th, as it coincides with the anniversary of the day the Occupational Safety and Health Act went into effect in 1970, and whereas the core theme for workers' memorial day is remember the dead, fight for the living, and whereas workers have sacrificed and continue to sacrifice to build our nation, feed our families, fuel our economy, teach our children, and care for our loved ones, often at risk to their own safety and well-being, and whereas we recognize and affirm that every worker has a basic right to a safe and healthy workplace, free of injury, violence, and harassment, and whereas we recognize the essential role of local, state, and federal government alongside labor unions in securing safe and dignified workspaces, and whereas in Ferguson Township, we continue our work to create a community that supports workers and working families, and now therefore, in recognition of the sacrifices of workers and working families past and present in our community, the Ferguson Township Board of Supervisors does hereby designate April 28th, 2023 as workers' memorial day, proclaim this 21st day of March 2023. And I will look for a motion.
This is Patty. I move that the Board of Supervisors adopt the proclamation of Ferguson Township, Center County, Pennsylvania, officially recognizing workers' memorial day.
I'll second.
Laura, I'll second.
Thank you. Any, any comments on this item? Thank you. If you could just share your name and township of residence at the podium, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Connor Lewis, resident of State College Borough, and I, the president of Seven Mountains Central Labor Council, AFL-CIO, and I'm joined in the somewhat thinned audience by Bill Becker from Bricklayers Local 5 PA, and earlier, we were joined via Zoom by Danell Corin, a nurse at Mount Nittany Hospital, and a member of SEIU Healthcare PA. I just wanted to first extend my thanks to the Board of Supervisors for considering this proclamation, and extend the thanks of our Central Labor Council, which represents 16,000 members of union households in center, Huntingdon, Mifflin, and Juniatic Counties. And as was mentioned, the theme of workers' memorial day, which is recognized on the anniversary of the adoption of the Occupational Safety and Health Act, is remember the dead, fight for the living, which is a quote from Mary Harris, an immigrant from Ireland who was a leader of the early 20th century labor movement, is better known as Mother Jones, and was a woman who never shied from a fight on behalf of working people. Unfortunately, the, whoa, that was a bit of a jump in volume. Unfortunately, the last three years have given us too many workers to remember. And I particularly, I would be remiss if I didn't highlight the nurses and the healthcare workers at Mount Nittany Hospital, who have fought for years and worked at risk to their own lives and safety and health to keep our community healthy. who have fought for years and worked at risk to their own lives and safety and health to keep our community healthy. And I think it's important to highlight that all of those proud members of SEIU Healthcare PA have sacrificed and continue to sacrifice to ensure that our communities are safe, along with many other essential and frontline workers. Unfortunately, there are a lot of other workers, whether it's skilled tradespeople, school district paraprofessionals, nurses, bus drivers, across the range of professions, whether union or non-union, that lose their lives or suffer serious and lasting injury on the job. And we want to ensure that they're remembered. And while we as labor unions, as working people, and of course, the local governments in the region and state government and all levels of government work to ensure that those workers are safe, which I think meets Mother Jones's urge to fight for the living, we want to take the moment to recognize those that have lost their lives and have suffered injury while on the job. And particularly those essential workers who have worked through the last two, three years to keep us safe. And as we do that work, I think it's important that we ensure that we remember those that we've lost. And so I just want to thank again the supervisors and again, extend the thanks of all of the members of the local AFL-CIO for considering this proclamation.
Thanks so much for your comments and for joining us tonight. There's no other discussion on this item. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. Thank you. And up next, we have a proclamation of the Township of Ferguson Center County, Pennsylvania, to officially recognize Safe Digging Month.
This proclamation is in support of Pennsylvania Underground Utility Line Protection Law, PA Act 287 of 1974. It hereby designates April 22nd, 23 as Pennsylvania's Safe Digging Month.
Thank you, and I will read the proclamation. This is a proclamation of the Township of Ferguson Center County, Pennsylvania, to recognize April as Pennsylvania's Safe Digging Month. Whereas the month of April 2023 is recognized as Pennsylvania's Safe Digging Month. And whereas the initiative is sponsored by Pennsylvania 811, a utility notification information center with over 50 years of continuous service to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. And whereas Pennsylvania 811 received over 1 million excavation notifications in 2022 and transmitted approximately 6.8 million notifications to their member facility owners and operators, allowing essential utility and construction crews to provide vital underground services and repairs of critical infrastructure to communities throughout Pennsylvania. And whereas their mission is to prevent damage to underground facilities, to promote safety, provide an efficient and effective communications network among project owners, designers, excavators and facility owners. And whereas when contacting 811, at least three business days before digging, a homeowner or contractor is connected to a unique service that notifies the appropriate underground utility operators in the municipality in which the work will be performed. And whereas by notifying 811 of their intent to dig, the homeowner or contractor is knowingly helping to protect the underground utilities themselves, work crew and their neighbors from any unsafe digging practices within their community. And now therefore, the Ferguson Township Board of Supervisors in support of the Pennsylvania Underground Utility Line Protection Law, PA Act 287 of 1974, does hereby designate April 2023 as Pennsylvania's Safe Digging Month. We encourage all Pennsylvanians to visit the 811, Pennsylvania 811 website at pawancall.org for information about digging safely, proclaim this 21st day of March, 2023. And I'll take a motion.
This is Patty. I move that the Board of Supervisors adopt the proclamation of the Township of Ferguson Center, Center County officially recognizing Safe Digging Month.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any other discussion on this item? I didn't know if we had any guess for this item. If there's no other comment, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, say no. Thank you. Okay, flip back. Okay, we are on to a public hearing on a resolution of the Township Ferguson Center County, Pennsylvania, authorizing the filing of a grant application for funding administered by the Department of Conservation and Natural Resources for the project Cecil Urban Park Phase 2.1. Mr. Progar.
Thank you, Chair. On January 17th, Pennsylvania DCNR opened an application period for a community conservation partnership program. That will involve projects including parks and recreation projects that expand or revitalize existing parks that improve access to recreation for all. As a result of this opportunity, staff proposes to apply for this, for this grant for the construction of Cecil Urban Park Phase 2, a vital urgent need providing connectivity throughout the Pine Grove and Mills Village area. Additionally, this park features climate action affirmative green infrastructure via native seed mixes and herbaceous paving while also supporting the township's stormwater infrastructure. The proposed plan is consistent with Park Master Plan Phase 2.1, which is drawn by HRT, with additional walking paths and alternative amenities suggested in the 2021 review process by the Pine Grove Hill Small Area Planning Committee. Amenities include dual walking, dual walking loops, ADA accessible pathways, benches, parking and pavilion, providing access to recreation for all. Construction of this phase represents a critical step in the completion of Cecil Urban Park. A focal point for open space for, for a growing community. A draft resolution is provided with the agenda for tonight's public.
Thank you. And this is a public hearing, so I'll open the public hearing for comments on this item. And I'm seeing none, so I'll close the public hearing and I will ask for a motion.
This is Patty. I move that the Board of Supervisors adopt the resolution authorizing the submittal of DCNR, C, sorry, CP2 grant application for Cecil Irving Park funding.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, any discussion on this item? Laura.
Thank you. So I know that DCNR relies heavily on master plans, and that's a really good practice. But we just did this RPOS plan after we did the master plan. But the RPOS plan shows some support for a proposed asset of an amphitheater, showing unique, support for unique assets such as that, or a skating facility. And so I just wondered, Mr. Modricar, when you're submitting this application for this grant, is there any way that there's, say, like, an asterisk option that you could write into the grant that could potentially make it more enticing for DCNR? Because I know it's about recreation for all, but then also access to unique assets. So I just wonder if there's any way you could asterisk, say, an amphitheater and a skating rink as being potential optional swap outs that we would be willing to put on the table if they give us money? If they have some sort of preferred idea, because we have support for that in the plans and also through the SAP. So that's just a really, again, kind of creative sort of a thing and probably not possible. But I thought I'd put it out there and connect the dots. So even if it's not possible for this, that we're striving for something like that. So that question is to you, Mr. Modricar.
I'm actually, I'm going to redirect that. I believe that goes to Mr. Progar.
Oh, sorry, James, to you.
In this case, this plan really is the intermediate step. It's not including the amphitheater. This would include the dual walking loops, the connectivity along Sunday Drive, or along Mixon Road connecting to Sunday Drive, parking. And I think that's really in the, in the stormwater, yeah, as well. That's really the extent of this scope.
I'll also provide.
Excuse me, a little, a comment here. This was a project that I had worked pretty closely as the assistant township manager. I worked with the township engineer to prepare the, the visual, I can't think of it, the master plan for the submission of the grant. And handed this off to, to Mr. Progar midway or in Q3 or Q4 of last year. And so I would note that it's certainly something that staff could consider. We have a deadline to get the grant submission in by, I think it's the second or third week of April. And, and so what Ms. Ninni's suggesting right now would require staff time to sit down, revisit the, you know, the, the master plan and have some updates done for the grant submittal documents. And in, in doing that, if the board wanted to see that done, it could essentially delay our submission of the grant, which would ultimately delay, you know, construction of this particular phase. There is the goal to have the amphitheater, but it would just need to be considered for a future phase. Township engineer had concerns with some additional work that would be required to do, that we certainly are capable to do. Just we wouldn't be able to do it within this phase.
Thanks, thanks, Ms. Martin. Thank you.
Any other discussion on this? Okay, seeing none. I think this is a roll call. Vote.
Yes, yes, Madam Chair. This is a roll call vote for 2023-13. Mr. Gracie Griffin?
Yes.
Ms. Ninni?
Yes.
Ms. Strickland?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
All right. Resolution passes unanimously.
Okay, next is a resolution of the Township of Ferguson Center County, Pennsylvania, authorizing the township manager to execute an agreement and contract for professional services. And this goes to Mr. Modricar.
Thank you. So the township's advancing the preliminary design of our municipal separate storm sewer pollutant reduction projects. And those include projects along Slab Cabin Run and a tributary to Beaver Branch as required by our permit. You recall, we had a work session on this and we, we talked about some of what was involved. And we need to advance the surveying so that we can start advancing the design. We will come back to you at a future date with more information, talk about whether or not we're doing the duck pond. But really, tonight, what we're asking is that you authorize the manager to sign executive professional services agreement with SAS to advance the survey work. The work is included in our 2023 budget. And in particular, the work includes topographic survey consulting, deed mosaic boundary survey consulting, easement right-of-way plat consulting, and any, any other survey work that is needed. I, I will mention that when this proposal was put together, we had, we still have someone on staff that does surveying. And this firm has a professional land surveyor that would check that work, that would help with any of the deed research, property boundary survey, easement plats, and supplement any of that design. We still have that individual in-house, but he will only be here for a very short period of time. So we're having him work as much as we can. In the future, we may need to come back and talk about supplementing this, but I don't want you to be surprised if sometime in the future, you know, we ask to supplement for additional surveying if we don't have the resources in-house. So, so, so tonight, we're asking you to authorize the manager to sign the professional services agreement with SAS for the scope presented, for a fee not to exceed $25,500, which is included in our budget.
Thank you. Would anyone care to make that motion?
Yes, I would move that we entertain the motion that was stated by the Director of Public Works.
This is Patty, I'll second.
Okay, discussion on this item? Not seeing any online, any in the room? Okay, if there is none, this is a roll call vote?
Yes, Madam Chair. This is for Resolution 2023-14. Ms. Ninni?
Yes.
Ms. Strickland?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Gracie Griffin?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next is a request for consideration of a modification at 125 East Pine Grove Road. And we'll go to Ms. Worgo.
Thank you. On November 14th, 2252 Pine Grove Hall Real Estate Holdings requests a modification from 22516 Landscaping. The 125 East Pine Grove Road preliminary land development plan proposes the conversion of a single-family home into a restaurant with indoor and outdoor dining areas. The property is located within the village district, approximately 0.496 acres. The applicant is requesting a modification from providing the required amount of planting in the buffer yard under the ordinance. The lot is small in size with overhead utilities, but the applicant claims it's not conducive to successful planting. The applicant has proposed alternative landscaping for the buffer yard requirements. Including your agenda is a sheet plan with required planting by ordinance and then the proposed alternative from the applicant. I've also included in there two memos, both from Larry McGinnis Township Arbors. One is his review of the most recent recent submission. Tree Commission got to look at this original submission. And based on that review at the last Tree Commission meeting, they had updated the plan and worked with Larry on getting a little bit closer to compliance with our ordinance. The Arbors and Planning Commission still recognize that in this instance, strictly applying our landscaping ordinance to this lot is troublesome. So they have complied, in our opinion, as close as they can. With that, so Planning Commission reviewed this at their last meeting at the beginning of March. They recommended approval to the Board of Supervisors based on the modification sheet plan that was required by the applicant. And staff is recommending that the Board of Supervisors grant the modification request and direct the staff to review 22516 Landscaping and those proposed potential amendments specifically for this zoning district and potentially a little bit closer at these smaller lots in township overall.
Thank you. Let's start with discussion. I'll look here in the room if there's any question, comments on that. Not seeing any, so I'll look online. Any discussion on this item? And if not, I will look for a motion.
This is Patty. I move that the Board of Supervisors grant the modification request from Pine Grove Hall Real Estate Holdings Limited LLC from, oh boy, what is that, 25, no.
22516.
Thank you, 22516 Landscaping.
Thank you. And a second?
I'll second Laura. And can I propose a friendly amendment to, which would to be including, I think this was the intention, include the staff recommendation in the motion to review 22-516 Landscaping and identify proposed potential amendments? Was that intended to, okay, so question, would you accept a friendly amendment, Patty?
Absolutely.
Motion?
Absolutely.
Okay, and then I'll, I'll friendly second our friendly amendment.
Thanks for that clarification. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion on this?
Well, I actually took an official.
Oh, do we need to? Okay, you seconded it and then you did the friendly amendment, so we need a vote on your amendment to the motion?
Yeah, yeah, sorry.
Okay, that's fine. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, say no. Okay, so the amendment is included. Thank you. Any other discussion? And so now the motion and the second stands with the amendment approved.
Right, and I just wanted to confirm something, I think. So it took me like years to figure this out. But I think, so embarrassing to admit before the public, but basically, because, so staff is tasked, no matter how difficult the lot is, they're tasked with trying to get compliance with our ordinance. And so even if there's a potential for a request for modification, And so even if there's a potential for a request for modification, task, staff is still being tasked with meeting that. And so is that, is that kind of a correct idea, like, because ultimately that's your goal. So the reason I'm asking is because as we move into looking at the village district, we really want, I think, if I'm coming to the right conclusion, we really want to be careful about just sort of saying, oh, well, it can be modified. Um, because staff is still going to be trying to meet that ordinance. So we want to try to get really as close to what we want as we can before we rely on that modification process. Yeah.
So I would say that is accurate. These are your laws put in place by the board is our job to ensure that all plans are complying with them. At the same time, we recognize, especially in this instance, we don't want to be requiring plant, in this instance, plantings that we know potentially would not survive, given the tight space that they would be required to be planted in. And specifically related to this zoning district, when you have three-foot setbacks, but we have a 15-foot buffer for landscaping. So I think it's safe to say that our landscaping ordinance is for a suburban context, and it does not necessarily reflect these developed smaller lots. And the arbors is aware of that. Entry commission is aware of that. I think they, all parties felt that more canopy trees could have been planted on this lot. However, the locations where the canopy trees could fit, that was also in the same area as the living walls that are also proposed. And only the board is able to approve of those living walls, and that essentially decreases their 15-foot landscaping buffer to three with that approval.
Thank you so much. Yes, thank you so much. I look forward to our, our official changing of some things to really facilitate property owners to use their properties, um, better out there. So, thank you.
Thanks for providing that context around there. That's a great step forward to be looking at that again. Okay, any other discussion on this? And if not, I'll go to a vote. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no? Okay, thank you. And up next is a letter of support for St. Paul Lutheran Church. Ms. Martin?
Uh, yes, provided with the agenda is a drafted letter for the board's consideration to provide support for the church, um, with the requested item.
Thank you. Okay. Anyone care to make the motion?
I'll move that the Board of Supervisors direct staff to send the drafted letter of support.
This is Patty. I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Just say thank you to staff for, for doing this. And thank you to the church and to the congregation for doing this. And hopefully, thank you to West Penn Sustainable Energy Fund for doing this, so.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks for, staff for writing this. I'll say, at the executive committee today, there were, there was this letter and a second one for a second church, uh, um, applying to this program, so.
That's good.
Yeah, so very good. Okay, there's no other discussion. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no? Okay, and moving on to what was, item 10, uh, board member request, request for a discussion on regulating of burning of motor oil. Ms. Dinenny?
Thank you so much. Um, this also came of, the information that came from a resident. Um, I was not aware of this situation and, again, referring to our strategic plan, um, and the general statement of, uh, living in a high-quality environment. We, um, further have our environmental bill of rights, which I failed to excerpt. Um, but that actually was passed by resident referendum, um, I think was 2012. So, um, clearly sends a signal when it's done by, by voter referendum that it's of importance to our residents, if anybody doubted it. Um, and the item that was brought to light was that, um, waste oil is being burned, um, in a location in the township. Um, and when I did just a small amount of research, I found that, um, other municipalities regulate that, um, particularly by requiring testing to identify that there's no hazardous materials, uh, that are in it before burning it if you decide that you want to use waste oil as your, um, heating, uh, oil. So, um, you know, I wanted the board to consider, uh, asking staff to, uh, look at similar regulation of burning waste motor oil, um, because it clearly, uh, represents a health hazard. Um, and now that the, we are aware of it, uh, it'd be something I'd like us to address. And, um, given the support of the environmental bill of rights, I think that our residents would, um, want that as well. So, that is it, my introduction. Um, so, uh, my, my motion would be that we, uh, and I'm not necessarily putting this out there. I want to hear others' thoughts on a motion. But my motion that I would, uh, consider would be to, uh, direct staff to, um, research other locales in Pennsylvania, uh, such as Allegheny County, um, to see how they've managed the issue and to perhaps propose something to us. Uh, so that would be my thought on the matter. Um, but again, I'd like to hear from, uh, board members. Thanks.
Thanks. I'll actually look to staff first, just to help us maybe frame the discussion, because this is really an introduction to this topic. Um, if you have any context you want to add that might help us.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, you know, the, the Director of Planning and Zoning, I talked about this briefly, and I think at, at one point, I may have even had a few, um, exchanges with some other representatives and, and possibly even the solicitor. You know, I think research certainly would be warranted if this is something that the board wanted to pursue. This is generally an item that I believe is regulated through DEP. Um, I understand Allegheny County does have that, uh, that, that, that enforcement, that law, but I'm unfamiliar with any local municipalities that enforce, um, the burning of motor oil. So I'm not suggesting that it can or can't be done. I'm just acknowledging that I, that, that certainly research would have to be conducted to determine how this might be regulated and enforced, um, and identify, you know, what resources might be involved. I think Allegheny County might actually have a health department, and that certainly, you know, provides some resources that we could perform that level of research to bring back to the board if this is something the board would like to consider. Um, you know, better understanding of what municipalities in the Commonwealth currently regulate this, better understanding of Allegheny County's, uh, resources that they, that they utilize to, to manage this regulation.
Thanks. So you're, so none of the other center region municipalities have something we could model, okay? So when you say the level of research, that makes me think that this is not a typical scope of research that our staff would be.
To my knowledge, we haven't performed this, this, um, you know, any type of research previously on this matter, so. It would be, it would be something that we would, we would do differently than we've done in the past.
Like, would you engage a consultant on this, or?
I, I don't know. I honestly haven't given it much thought.
Thank you. Okay, let's go to any board questions on this.
Laura, have you, have you had frequent complaints about this?
No, I have not had frequent complaints about this.
Because I haven't had any, and, um, I guess my concern is, is that, um, how did somebody put it for another issue? It sort of seems like it's a, um, I don't know, it just, we're trying to find a problem. And, um, staff time is so precious. And, um, I know that here in Center County, we have the hazardous waste collection. I just signed up for mine, and, and then it's often they have, if you go on the website too, there's all these lists of the different places in Center County where you can take your used motor oil. So it's not like we don't have the ability, um, to get rid of it otherwise and educate our public. So, um, I think I'm sort of in favor of just.
I'm sorry, Patty, just to clarify this, um, if I, if I'm understanding this problem correctly, the person's not looking for a place to dispose of it. They're actually burning it? And it's emitting into our air? So I don't, I don't think the question is, could we ask them to recycle it? I think the question is, um, given our environmental bill of rights and our, the will of our people that's represented in that, um, I think that taking any individual, um, and saying, would you want to live beside your neighbor who's burning waste motor oil, uh, untested for hazardous materials when it has a reputation of having them in it? Would you want to live beside that person and have the township say, you know, we don't really need to worry about this? So my perspective on this is, even though I haven't had many complaints, if I've had one complaint, it's too many. And, um, I guess if I'm the person that's being subjected to it, I want this board to stand up and take that seriously. Now, does that necessarily mean directing staff to look into an ordinance? Not necessarily. But I think it does mean us looking into this being a potential health hazard in some manner. Um, maybe others don't agree with me, but I would say that our public does, or they wouldn't have invited, they wouldn't have voted in an environmental bill of rights. So anybody that's up for election wants to be able to stand behind that, given it's the will of the people, so.
No, I understand that. I guess I'm just saying that there should be an education component too, about asking, set, you know, to, referring the person who's burning the motor oil and say, hey, you know, we recycle that.
Yes, absolutely. Don't burn it. Right, so that, that would be an absolute potential solution is to ask staff to find out if that's actually going on and if the individual is testing it. But the research that I think I was thinking of, that I'm confused about the desire to hire a consultant or even that being introduced at this point. It's a little bit sounding like Park's Governance, um, but I just, I thought it would be, you know, like, there was this oil spill and then, oh, DEP regulates that. Oh, but they have a responsibility to tell us if there's a contaminant. So I thought maybe that this might be something as simple as our manager contacting DEP about burning waste motor oil in a residential setting and whether that actually has toxins and hazardous materials like Allegheny County seems to think it has. I don't think that they think that just for their own fun. I think they probably have some validity there, but maybe our staff could validate that and validate that it's happening in our township. And if so, then we could maybe consider if it's something that we want to do something about. And, you know, I, again, maybe different than the rest of the board, but, um, that's, that's why I was elected. It's on my campaign materials and I stand by those words. So, um, you know, I hope what we're not doing is developing an idea where out in the West End, anything goes, and if people break laws and park whatever way they want, and they want to burn waste oil, that that's going to be okay and that that's the message that we're going to send. Because it's definitely not the message I want to be sent from being a resident of the West End. I want to hear that my board is going to not allow those kinds of very, uh, sketchy kinds of behaviors in addition to the racing on the roads and various other kinds of interesting activities with bomb, you know, bombs bursting in air and all of that kind of guns and fires and everything else that we have out here. So, um, trying to keep that trend in check. Uh, and I think burning waste motor oil is where I find my stopping point on those kinds of behaviors. So hopefully, looking for some support in that.
So I want to make it around to the rest of the board. Jeremy?
All right, I guess we acknowledge everyone in the audience wants to make comments.
Hey.
Um, hang in there. Uh, so, yeah, I'm starting to wonder, like, my understanding, it appears motor oil can, there is a proper way to burn motor oil that has uh, compliance with federal air quality standards. So are we addressing a case where motor oil is carelessly in an unresponsible manner being burned? If so, whose responsibility of enforcement is that? Is that us, or does that fall on, uh, DEP or the, the, the feds? Just, you know, what, what, what lane are we supposed to be in? And who, who's to be in the other lanes?
Thank you. Uh, Corey, did you have comments on this item?
I do not beyond, again, understa- it would be nice before we move forward to, as I don't have a sense of the scope of the problem, um, in terms of how big of an issue is this? Is there one resident on the West End that is doing this? Is it a whole bunch of people? How often is it happening? Um, I think that, uh, response, if it's one person, uh, you know, again, I think that it's about, I think we try education first, um, before looking to create new statutes. Um, so that's my thoughts.
Thanks, Corey, and I'll, uh, give mine here before we move to public comment. That was mine too. I was wondering if first, you know, have we had a complaint? Have we had an inquiry from the public about this? To determine that it's, I understand that there's, that you have had.
Are you asking me, Lee?
No, I was asking staff if they have any, uh, received any complaints, comments, questions about any incidents like this, just like Corey said, right, and just trying to get a sense of the scope here of the problem. Okay.
I'm not entirely sure, and I guess maybe now's a good time to ask Ms. Dinenny the location of this particular issue. I mean, it may be looped into an item that I'm familiar with. Um, that I believe Planning and Zoning's been working to address one particular resident, uh, that's been, you know, allegedly burning motor oil, uh, but there hasn't, to my understanding, been any representative of the township that found it to be a matter that they had the authority to go out with confirmation that this was happening. Um, and so I guess I'll ask Ms. Dinenny to confirm the location of, uh, the origin of the, of the complaint.
I don't know the exact location. I wasn't, that wasn't shared with me.
So I'm not, yeah, I guess.
That I recall, I, 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 I don't, I, yeah, so, um.
Yeah, so I can't confirm or deny.
I guess, I guess the thing is that, you know, when I submitted this weeks ago, we could have had this conversation and maybe I could have found out that information. So I guess what I'll do at this point, since it's 10:30, and clearly staff and I should have maybe had a little moment face-to-face on figuring out if this is already under, uh, question or whatever you want to say with the planning and zoning. Um, so I would move that we defer this to our next, uh, regular meeting and so I can touch base with staff on the question that's been posed and get some information from the resident.
I would suggest that there be a communication to the township and we can address it.
From the complaint. Well, I guess what I'm saying is it's unclear to me at this point in time whether these are the same issue. So until I can work out whether these are the same issue, which is not going to happen at 10:30 right now, this moment, I'd prefer to defer the rest of the conversation, um, until I can determine that. Like I said, if I could right now, I would, but I cannot. So I'd like to table it or whatever motion to postpone or table or whatever the appropriate motion is.
Okay, we do have a public comment that I want to take before we, uh,
Okay.
table it, but I think just to clarify what the manager was. Table it, but I think just to clarify what the manager was asking for was a communication from the complainant. Is that correct?
Yeah, I, I think that would be helpful. And then it would, we could better extract the details to understand what authority we may have or opportunity to explore that a little bit more.
Right. Like I said, had I been contacted when this was still a consent item and not, that was part, that's part of the consent item process is the reason it goes on consent first is to identify with the board that it's an item that they think is worthy of discussion, to give staff a heads up and to enable the requister and staff and anybody to have any kind of information lined up to have a discussion. So I did not anticipate needing to know that because I had no idea that there was potentially maybe either another issue with burning waste motor oil or this being the same. So now I think what's on the table is maybe there's two, maybe there's one. So like I said. Okay. Sure, the complaint can certainly come to staff, but I just don't want the item to stop being a board discussion because there was this detail that hadn't been followed up.
I think the point was that the manager was trying to figure out if it was, I had asked her if she had had complaints. And so she was trying to figure out if it was something she had received. And she wouldn't know that unless she saw the same one that you are referring to. And the question that I was asking that had been asked by Corey is just what is the scope of the amount of complaints that have been received? So two different questions. She was just trying to kind of validate my question to her if she'd received complaints and we were just trying to get a sense of that. So not anything that needed to be included beyond just trying to get a sense of how many complaints have been received by either board members of the township. And I'm not seeing that anybody else has received any. So I just want to go to public comment at this point. And Mr. Wheel, okay, you can go first. That's fine. Yeah, go ahead. Sorry. If you could give us your name and township of residence.
My name's Stefan Ewing and I live in Ferguson Township. My comment is I would love to see the same amount of energy and staff time on something like an ordinance banning the use of things like Roundup and synthetic additives in people's landscaping because, for instance, my mom's garden, which grows food that we eat, has water leaching from my neighbor's lawn when they spray chemicals on it, which also leaches into the waterways indirectly, which also causes what we now have a 5% volume dead zone in the Chesapeake Bay and a 40% volume or surface area dead zone in the Chesapeake Bay. So I would love to see State College or Ferguson Township invest energy and time in create, being one of the people leading the way saying, hey, we're not going to put poisons on our lawns because we care about, I don't know, the waters of planet Earth.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah.
The motor oil burning isn't silly, but it seems like a much smaller problem.
Ralph Wheelan, Tedpole Road, Ferguson Township. I think this is another, another solution looking for a problem. To go back to what Centree said about DEP, there, and EPA further, there are furnaces that are made specifically to burn used, used oil. And I'm sure that EPA, that the manufacturers of those outfits are required to, you know, have, have a discharge that's within their limits. And to say that burning used motor oil is going to be more, you know, more detrimental than any other fuel, I would submit that a poorly maintained heating oil or propane or wood, wood burner has just, has as much, as much potential to create, you know, pollutants as, as a waste oil burner. As I said, this is a, this is a solution looking for a problem that ranks up there with, you know, banning our outdoor smokers because of one complaint.
Thank you. And we have the solicitor on Zoom, so I'm interested to see if there's any comment. I hate to surprise you by calling on you.
Well, I, I would just say that I think, I think the critical part is understanding the complaint and where the issue is. I think if a resident of the township has an issue over any of these things, whether it's using chemicals on a yard or something related to their furnaces, they can always report those to DEP and they will investigate them and they're the parties that properly investigate them. Looking beyond that into regulations, we have to look at what we are allowed to do as a second-class township under home rule and, and also state preemption requirements, which basically in the environmental specter are quite broad and say that DEP, who regulates things in Pennsylvania environmental, including federal law. So they have a, you know, a carry forward from EPA to regulate water and other things. We need to know whether those laws preempt anything we might do anyways, right? So there would be some necessary investigation in terms of looking at those issues. And I, I did look at the Allegheny County website that was cited in the agenda. You know, we went through this issue with COVID and this is the reason the borough worked with the county and tried to get a health department, which I don't think that's gotten anywhere because health departments, when properly set up under Pennsylvania law, have a lot more latitude to control health-related issues. And if you don't have a health department, you can't sort of, you can't act as a health department. You have to have the right people in the health department. And I assume that's what Allegheny County did. I didn't dig further. I didn't talk to anybody in Allegheny County. But there's a lot of steps that we might need to take here. And so I do think with the suggestion of, of the Ms. Danini, that maybe stepping back here and looking at where this problem might be, there may be some other avenues to address the problem rather than the township feeling like it has to necessarily jump in and regulate.
Thank you so much. I think that's a really good suggestion. So to get back in touch with the complainant, maybe help facilitate them filing the complaint with DEP or EPA, whoever is best to be contacted there. I think there is also a good suggestion to increase that hazardous waste recycling option. So just as a general, I think those are great options for us to regularly promote. Was there other discussion on this? Did you have some?
Yeah, I, yeah, I concur if, if it's possible that whatever this issue is, if it could be handled by the agencies that exist, whether that be DEP, remembering my acronyms at 10:30 at night, to, to do so. And I, I, I don't know if there is any good decorum with whoever is burning the soil. If someone is able to diplomatically talk to them, you know, could be as simple as an educational piece or you, Ralph even brought up a good point as well tonight. You know, if they are using something that maybe is malfunctioning, do they, are they aware of it? So definitely some other ways. I don't know. Is there even a way, like, we can direct staff when it comes to like communications, like pushing out the hazardous waste event and.
I mean, if you want to initiate a policy in that form, but staff can certainly provide some assistance and will. And I think that if there's a complaint to staff and there's, you know, some assistance that we can be able to provide in terms of, you know, facilitating communication between the complainant and the individual that's burning motor oil, I think, again, it helps identify is this one issue, you know, with three or four complaints, is this three or four issues with several different complaints? It'll better inform, you know, the capacity staff has to provide some, you know, assistance with a response. I, I do like Ms. Danini's suggestion and I think it aligned with the solicitor, just taking back, taking a minute and just kind of tabling this issue and better understanding what the issue or issues are. And then of course, if, you know, as always, if staff can provide some assistance, you know, we, we will. But also not in, not in a way that could position us to overstep our authority, especially if it's regulated through DEP and there are other legal concerns there. I generally suggest to staff to step away from that.
I, I was just thinking in terms of that educational piece, I don't know if maybe our communication strategy has changed over the years, but I remember one time we used to every now and then put out education, whether it be about bears in the springtime, getting into everyone's bird feeders and stuff or mulch volcanoes, how to properly mulch on your lawn and such. And even bringing up about the waste collection event. So people are aware like, oh, you know, there is a way that I can get rid of any chemicals I might have laying around.
And that's a really good point. And generally that you see those types of, you know, I'll say news stories in the print newsletter or the e-newsletter as a result of complaints that are generated. So the, the issue on bears, former chief of police, you know, I think messaged me and was like, oh, we're getting a lot of complaints here at FTPD through the non-emergency number. And I think we need to get something in our communications. And so that's generally how things make its way into, you know, at the level of staff, right? That's not to say that the board hasn't suggested, hey, we're seeing a lot of issues. But really what we'd like to see at the staff level is if we are getting, if, you know, if board members are getting complaints or have an issue that they would like addressed, of course, you've got constituents that are going to reach out to you because you're representing them. And so I wouldn't suggest that that necessarily, I'm not here suggesting that stop. It's in addition to reaching out to you, right? Empowering the residents to reach out to the appropriate staff person. And then there can be that documented file and that list to support. Is it, you know, and there's generally different levels. Sometimes it does just start with some communication and some additional outreach through our website or social media. If it really warrants the attention of every individual resident, we'll put it in the print newsletter and that's, you know, real estate there. It's like prime commodity to get something in the print newsletter, right? Because you've only got so many pages. And then if there's something else, we've even sent postcards directly out to, you know, particularly with issues related to parks. For example, you might recall we had that one issue or concern with accessibility. So there's just different levels that staff might, you know, or different tools that staff might utilize to ensure that their communication is being effective. And as you know, sometimes we'll bring things to the board looking for, you know, an ordinance amendment or additional levels of support through policy.
Thank you for that. So does that sound like a good set of next steps to have the complainant get back in touch with, or to get in touch with staff to get some more information, maybe help them with their next steps?
So I'll move that we table this and request that staff discuss the matter with me to determine who is the origin of the complaint and if there's multiple issues and that we come back at a later time and discuss what staff has found.
Second that.
Okay, discussion. Is that clear?
So what is the motion? I'm sorry, that, that we meet with.
Sorry, I was trying to capture that we table this discussion right now. And I thought I was reflecting what you were saying then, that, that, you know, you, of course, I don't know. I, let me just take a moment and say how interesting it's been for me to move from chair to not being chair. Because back when I was chair, it was like, oh, Laura's never going to suggest something where we overstep our jurisdiction and become DEP. And now I'm not chair and it's like everybody's really worried I want us to overstep our jurisdiction. So I will now and forever clarify, I in no way ever, ever want or suggest or am suggesting or desire for Ferguson Township to ever overstep our jurisdiction. So that was my side. Okay, so that clarification then feeds the rest of the motion, which, and then staff and I can discuss the complaint and whatever Jenna was saying about maybe bringing it in regulation and how many complaints there might be. And if there's one or more, three people at one or one at three, we can discuss that. And then staff can also look into the actual regulation. And like the solicitor said, if the county only can do it because they're the county, or if maybe it's just supporting this one or maybe multiple complainants that staff, so that she gathers all that information, which is really only two things, and then we discuss it again. So the two things are not getting out of our jurisdiction, but, you know, who does address it? And coordinating with me to learn more about the complainant's nature of where the location is.
So I, I'm happy to sit down with you, Ms. Danini and Ms. Strickland, and we can talk a little bit about information. I want to be mindful that we, sharing the complainant's information, there's some limitations there. But we can certainly discuss the complaint that you've received and better understand if, at a staff level, we can sync that up. But yes, I think that it's a great idea to have a meeting and then table this discussion if the board wants to consider continuing the conversation.
Thank you. Okay, we have a motion in a second. If there's no other discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say no. Okay, thanks very much. And moving on. Up next is a board member request, request for discussion on CADA bus stop on Blue Horse Drive.
This is not me, so that was an error.
Yes, thank you. Yep.
That was me.
Ms. Stevens, yes.
My understanding is that, so I will also withdraw this because my understanding is that staff has been in discussion with CADA and will continue to work that avenue first. So.
Thank you. Yes, township engineer had a conversation with Ms. Luana, the executive director of CADA. And initial response from CADA was, you know, exploring enforcement as well as some alternatives. But she followed up in an email and shared that she's, she's certainly interested in exploring the, the move of the, of the CADA bus stop with some other contingent agreements.
I'm sorry, but I, I'm confused about what's happening on this item, but like, I'm wondering if, what Patty brought to us is that now there is maybe a potentially different project with the Northland thing? Or is it, I'm just asking, what are the implications of this change that we're not now going to talk about? Thank you.
Right, no, good question.
Oh, right. I just, I think that it's on hold designing the mid-block cross. If we can move the bus stop, then there wouldn't be a need to do that. So basically in terms of that, that would be on hold, as it was in Dave's report, that that's on hold. And then we'll try and work out at the staff level, staff, our staff with CADA staff, to see if we can come up with a, a better solution.
I guess then I have questions about, so it hasn't been designed yet. And so this is the best time that we could have done this. So there was no design that would be changed or anything. This is pre that. Great. Thanks Patty for bringing this to us.
Thanks. And I'll look to Mr. Modricar for more information on that.
Yeah, so the project is in design with the mid-block crossing. It's been halted because of these discussions. So there's no design going on right now. So once we, once staff knows whether or not there's going to be a mid-block crossing, then we can take, can continue with design. We wouldn't be spending any of the mobility funds that were set aside. We'd only be spending the funds that were set aside for, for paving and repairing the stormwater ponding, making the stormwater issue there better. And it sounds like that is the direction we're going. And if it is, the bus stop would be moved to the north of the Teaberry intersection. And then the speed limit would need to be reduced from there up to the road that turns into, to Teaberry Ridge. So that's. So that's, that's kind of what staff needs to continue the dialogue with CADA. And if that's the way we're going, get that direction from the manager. So then we can continue with design and then get a project out to bid.
Okay.
Those are the implications.
So would that, so would there be a plan then to bring this back to the board once those discussions are completed? Or we not see it again if? There's a, there's a savings of money and work. And so unless, if there was an increase in cost or an agreement that we would need to put in place, I don't know that it would come back to the board. The township engineer wanted, had suggested adding the, there's one, one addition here, which is laying the, the concrete pad, which he proposed that we would just put it in for, with another contract with other work that we're doing regarding concrete. So I guess I'd ask if we could just get an update on the result of those conversations? Yeah, Dave will have it in his report. Even, yes, exactly. Advancing the projects. Yeah, just in, in the report. So, so we're up to speed on that.
Yes.
So I'm sorry, just then. To fully understand then the implications, just then, is that no money would be spent this year for Northland study implementation? Because then all of the work being done there would just be with the paving contracts? Is that correct or is that not correct? Because it would be a modified amount that would be spent on the implementing Northland area study? Or was that the sum total of what we were planning for this year?
So there were two funding line items in the budget for this section. One was the mobility improvements. They were line itemed. And then, then separate from that was the paving and stormwater. So we would utilize the funds for the paving and stormwater. We wouldn't utilize the funds that were set aside for mobility with the exception, perhaps a thousand or $2 for the concrete bat, pad for the CADA bus stop. Whether or not we would get reimbursed from CADA, I don't know yet. And then we just got, we have to move, move a stop, move a bus stop. It, it would be rather insignificant compared to the funds that were set aside. If we don't do the rapper rectangular flashing beacon and the mid-block crossing.
Okay. I just want to, I'll just make one comment, which I don't know, I don't know if it's accurate or not, but you know, since I've been in seat, we've had the mobility study, which was a really good study and the Pine Grove Mill, I'm sorry, the Northland study and the Pine Grove Mills larger plan. Both really great, really great plans. And I've been a super vocal spokesperson for the Pine Grove Mills plan, Ward 1 elected, and I was really involved with that. I also have really voiced support for the Northland plan. And I feel like, I don't know if it's accurate, but it seems like every time we get close to implementing something for that plan, for one reason, good reason or bad reason, one reason or another, we don't get there. And I just wondered, is that accurate to say that we have yet to implement anything from that plan? Or am I forgetting one thing that we did do?
No, we, we've done some improvements from the plan.
Okay. All right. Okay. I just want to make sure that we're continuing to look at that plan as being something that we really want to implement. Not that I want to spend money. It's just, you know, especially now we're seeing maybe that development there, just keeping that in our sights. Thank you.
Thanks. And thanks to staff for continuing those discussions. Because I think the, you know, the goal was to improve safety over there and how, you know, I think having, talking directly with the partner that's dealing with this, I think is the way to go. So thank you for that. So I guess that concludes that item. Okay. And moving on, communications to the board, anything anyone wishes to share? I've had none. I'm not seeing any. There are a number of calendar items in the agenda if anyone is interested. And our calendar is also on the website with all the meetings and activities highlighted. If there is nothing else. Wait, I just want to make one comment. What, what should be in the calendar items is a, a line recognizing coffee and conversation, which is scheduled for April 1st at Discovery Space. So that's Saturday morning, April 1st, believe it's at nine o'clock? Eight o'clock?
Eight.
Eight o'clock, my apologies. Eight o'clock, Saturday, April 1st. And, and I do want to note that, that this is a, a staff-driven initiative. I, I recognize sometimes board members choose to attend. And of course, that, that does bring on the risk of potentially having a quorum, which, you know, as the manager, I would have to say one of you would have to leave if, if three of you showed up. And so I'm not really in the business of saying you can't come, but I do want to recognize that this is a staff-driven initiative. And so this is an opportunity for the public to come and, and participate in conversations, get to know staff and talk about any operational staff items. And so there again, you know, feel free to enjoy your Saturday. Again, not in the business of telling you not to come, but I also want to emphasize that it is a staff initiative. And so no, no supervisor of the board should, should ever feel like they should be in attendance for coffee and conversation because the expectation is that they're not attending. I appreciate that. Thank you for highlighting that and clarifying that.
Yeah, definitely. Thank you. And I, I would just throw out there, when board members have showed up, it has really driven a very positive public remarks, but totally understand where you're coming from and probably something to hash out later.
Well, I think maybe I'd like to make a comment at this point in terms of communications to the board on, about coffee and conversations. I appreciate what the manager has said. Previous managers have given somewhat equally mixed messages. And although I appreciate the intent is to both not offend board members and to also state the true intent of coffee and conversations, I want to state that the expectation of our residents is that the board members are supposed to be coming to coffee and conversations. So I want to state a lot more clearly that I have been in the past told by previous managers that I shouldn't absolutely not be coming to coffee and conversations because that is a place for staff to connect. And so when I first came in, I was sternly trained on that. And I think that the mixed messages that are continuing to be sent to our residents about their access to elected officials at that event is causing such a problem that it makes me want to make an agenda item to end coffee and conversations. Apparently for seven years, there's been individuals that have been complaining about my failure to attend at the Baileyville Hall events. And I did not know that until recently. So I have asked in the past for things to be scheduled when board members could attend if there's an expectation of the public to see those board members there. And I want to state that if I were consulted on a time for me to provide access of the public to me, that I would certainly be there. But I have not been consulted on when coffee and conversation is scheduled. And it is not something that is, fits into my schedule currently. So in addition to being told that this is not something I should be coming to and that it has not been scheduled in a time where I'm able to come to it, I feel like it's been really unfair that residents have criticized me for that. And Jeremy, you know, they can be ecstatic all they want when elected officials show up. But it's a pretty unfair expectation, given how it's been handled in the past. So.
Well, I think what Jeremy's sharing is the reception he's received. I don't want to go into something that's something we could deliberate on. It's not an agenda item. It was merely a comment from the manager, which I appreciate her sharing. So we'll leave it at that.
Well, unfortunately, it's not left at that.
I don't, I really don't want to continue the conversation. This is not something that was on the agenda. It's something the manager was trying to clarify for all of us. And so I just want to leave it at that. We could have a different discussion.
Might warn an agenda item.
We could have a different agenda item on it at a different time.
Yes, I agree.
Okay.
Thank you.
If there's nothing else, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
And I'll second, thank you. We are adjourned. Good night, Dave. Thanks so much.
Thank you for coming.
I don't know, but I was going to say thank you because you had quite a list tonight.
Yeah.
It was one of those nights where you had to, you know, like, okay.
I thought I should be here.
Yeah, no, that was still.
I'm a little under the weather, that's why I was wearing a mask.
Well, I'm sorry that we kept you so late.
No, no, that's, it's fine. I'm feeling better.
Okay, but it was so, it was just.